Every meeting we're going to switch... You're getting score updates on your phone during the night, right?
No.
Oh, I am! Genius! It breaks my heart to see this.
I know. Linda, by the way, I did...
Sounds nice.
You did give me a brand new one.
Sounds like...
I found it in my desk.
Are you ordered... is I C T V...
So... It actually had two batteries right there too, and it works!
Yes.
Ready?
But it's okay to have a new one.
Okay. Um, seeing that there is a tomorrow, I'm going to call the October 18th school committee meeting to order. And we're beginning... at the beginning I'll read the motion. We're going to go into executive session. To protect the bargaining position of the board, we move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, negotiation strategies with respect to non-represented personnel, and return to open session at approximately 7:00 P.M. I think I need a little call on that.
I'll second it.
Okay, second, and Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Braskew?
Yes.
Yes. This is a 4-0.
We have a school committee meeting to order. We're just returning from executive session. What I'd like to do is just before we open for public comment, and I have the sign-in sheet here, I would just like to make sure we go through the agenda. There was a late unforeseen addition to the agenda. So as people know, I believe, when we do public comment, it's for items that are not on the agenda. So I'm just to quickly go through for our, I actually don't have any old business right now, but our new business, we're going to do a first reading of food service policy. And we're going to have a presentation on the MCAS, which is a, we appreciate, very lengthy presentation, and we're very excited about it. We're also going to make an evaluation of both on our MASSS annual delegate designation, and we're going to vote, consider a vote of joint sponsorship of a rally that has been organized by REDD for this coming Sunday. And that was the late revision item. And then we have our information. So our public comment, just so the folks in the public know, the public is, public comment is on items not on the agenda. We usually have it for about 15 minutes, and I have a couple of people signed up, so we're going to go in order of how people are signed up. So Mrs. Downing, and I'd like to ask the people come to the microphone so that it can be on tape.
Thank you. Mary Ann Downing, 13 Heather Drive. So I have just three things to talk about. Obviously, I'm going to mention something about my support of what's happening over there. An MCAS comment that is unrelated to the scores, and maybe I'll just get to that. These arrived in my mailbox about an hour and a half ago, and I, please, next year, can we have the MCAS score meeting happen a little bit later than when we get, the parents get the scores? I haven't even opened them. I haven't had time to digest them, and I'm not alone. I know we are a big district with thousands of reports to send out, and parents want to have to look, parents will get more out of the presentation if they have time to digest. And I've talked to several other people who just got them today. So just as a thought on that. And before I get to talking about the teachers, the other quick topics I had were kind of budget/hiring questions. I'm a town meeting member, and sometimes town meeting people message me or ask me questions about what happened to this in the budget. The questions I got a couple of weeks ago was what happened to the elementary chorus? Because this, I recall, and I even went back and asked RCTV for the meeting video because we didn't have the slides, and it was said that there would be $25,000 for restoring elementary chorus and some two games in the athletic schedule. And this parent said, well, the Joshua Eaton teacher told me there's no elementary chorus this year. So...
Excuse me, Dr. Darty, please respond.
The positions were posted, and no one applied for the positions.
Okay, so what happened, I'm just curious, how much of the $25,000 that was in the town meeting slide went towards elementary chorus?
These, the staffing of positions, I think it's under $5,000.
So if nobody takes that position, can the money be reallocated to other needs in the budget?
When we do our projections at some point, we could take a look at it.
Okay, because the other thing this same person told me was at Eaton, she had heard there was some para, shortages of para hours, and the music and art teacher were having to work, cover lunch doing para stuff, so maybe the money...
That's not accurate.
That's, you can say that...
Right, but that's not accurate.
Okay, well, that's what, anyway, so there's money, anyway, from the chorus. And at the first, the August 30th school committee meeting, you mentioned there was an 0.6 FTE high school computer science teacher that wasn't filled, and I haven't seen the rec for that. Was that filled?
The position has not been filled. We are still trying to fill it. They've done some restructuring of the sections for first semester, but the position still has not been filled.
So students who would have classed with that teacher are still getting a class?
They are taking other classes instead.
So the classes were canceled, then?
The classes were not canceled. The students are taking electives in other classes instead. We didn't fill those sections with kids. We assigned them to other electives.
Not computer science electives necessarily?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know the details. We do have other computer science classes.
Okay.
Yes, Downing, I just want to make sure we have a couple of other...
Right, so the last thing I was just going to mention was, in my support, in, I know you can't comment on collective bargaining, and I understand one of the sticking points with the teachers is the amount of after-school meetings. And I can't pretend this was an exhaustive search, but I looked at about a half dozen of our peer districts, and not only did they have either fewer meetings than us, one of the things that I noticed, maybe you guys can take into account, and again, I know you can't comment, is specificity in time, that these meetings were, we, our most recent contract said, like, three afternoons a month, and these other meetings were very specific, other, I'm sorry, contracts were specific about, you know, two 60-minute meetings or no more than 125 minutes of meetings or something like that. And I just hope that as you guys try to come to a resolution, you don't let this stand in the way, because I think, looking at the PRIDE survey, the teacher, the teachers seem to be unhappy with what they're being at, the way their time is being controlled. And I've looked at a chart with all of the education levels of the teachers that someone got by getting payroll from downtown, and we have really educated staff. Let's trust their judgment, and let's work this out. This is a no-cost point. I hope you can, thank you.
I'd like to just ask, there's a couple of other people signed up, and I want to make sure that if there are other topics other than those that Mrs. Downing has already brought up, I want to take those first, but Brian Handby, Hanley, I might have that name on.
Yes, I just love a sign-in service.
Oh, okay. Christian, there was a Christian signed in. Does anybody want to speak? And Matt, anybody else? Okay, so I would like to, typically during public input, the chair, basically, we just accept the input. It may not always make a response, or the chair may direct the superintendent, understood, to respond to specific questions. But I'd like to just make a response at this point. We have, the school committee has responded to the emails that parents have been sending. There was a press release or a statement at the after-last school committee meeting. And I just want to say that Mr. Robinson and I are the two people who are on the negotiations team, and have been serving on that team since, I believe, March, working with Dr. Darty and the administrators that are on the team, and with the RTA team. Mr. Robinson and I have actually done this, I think, three or four times. We couldn't quite count, but been on the negotiations team as representatives of the school committee at least three or four times. So the Reading School Committee has offered fair and usable terms, including proposed financial terms, throughout the negotiations with the Reading Teachers Association. There are many areas where the school committee and the RTA have reached consensus throughout the negotiations. School committee is balancing the many goals of our district that are impacted through this process, and we continue our commitment to fiscal sustainability, attracting and retaining staff and teachers, and the achievement of our district mission and vision. And the school committee continues its commitment to reaching a resolution to the contract. As you have seen from information that's been released to the community, the Reading School Committee and the Reading Teachers Association have filed joint mediation with the Massachusetts Labor Relations Board. Mediation is a process in which a neutral third party, which is state-appointed mediator, helps the parties attempt to reach agreement that is acceptable to everyone. The cost of mediation is split between the Reading Public Schools and the Reading Teachers Association. Mediation is voluntary and confidential. The mediation process differs from a court proceeding or arbitration, and the parties maintain control of the outcome by hopefully reaching a consensus on the remaining issues. In our current negotiations, the parties have reached tentative agreement on many areas with a few items that are still in dispute. It is our hope that the parties will reach consensus on the remaining items with the goal of ratifying the terms of successor contract. The parties will be engaging in the mediation process in early November. So I hope that helps to clarify the information for folks in our community and any of the others who are here today. So further public input. Can you please make sure to state your name?
Good evening. My name is Brian Gilberti. I don't know if these are working. Oh, they are, great. 33 Ash Street. I've been a resident of Reading for 14 years. And there's an old saying that is, everybody loves teachers until you have to pay them. And when I first moved to Reading, I was hoping that this was not the community where that would be true. But everything that you're going to talk about tonight, MCAS presentation, everything else, is directly connected to those people. And I think that that has to be something that we all remember and take into consideration. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further input. We're going to move on to our consent agenda. So did anyone, maybe you have the motion, but does anyone need anything removed from the consent agenda?
Hold on.
Excuse me, I'm reading off, sorry.
She has a public comment.
Excuse me? Oh, I did, oh, sorry. I think I said Christian instead of question. Sorry, thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kristen Pegoraro. I am a first-grade teacher at Killam Elementary School. This is my 11th year teaching first grade in Reading. So I'm going to try not to get emotional. I've chosen to speak tonight not only as a voice for the teachers in this town, but as a voice for our students, because after all, they are our students. Day after day, they come to school. No matter their age, they come through our doors excited, anxious, and eager to learn and be challenged. Some come to school with worried bellies and some with empty ones. Some come to school, learning comes easy to them. And then there are those that learning is difficult for them, and they just hope they don't get called upon to read a lot in front of their peers or answer that tricky math problem. Teachers and students have many similarities, aside from our buildings, on a daily basis. We too come to school with a plethora of feelings. We too come to school excited, anxious, and eager to make education enriching and fun. We come to school and hope to make it a sanctuary for those who need it. We come to school willing to be a voice for those who need it as well. We wake up every morning and come to school because above all else, we believe education is one of the greatest gifts we can give our students. Those same students who come to school with worried bellies because they didn't grasp the latest concept we've been teaching them, but that's too bad, because we need to move on to the next thing if we're going to teach everything we're required to in one year. Those same teachers who just started wrapping their brains around the new writing curriculum, but now have to learn and implement a new reading, math, and science curriculum. We are all struggling to be successful in our own areas. Our students want to be successful in their learning, and our teachers want to be successful in their teaching. But I think above all else, all we really want is respect. We are all human. Those students who walk into our classrooms every day deserve every ounce of respect that we can give them, regardless of whether or not they have mastered everything that they've been taught. They are humans spanning from age five to 18 years old, and each of them looking for respect and trust in their own ways. Like our students, our teachers are looking for respect and trust from our administration, that we are still the highly qualified, dedicated educators that they hired in the first place. We want to be shown that we are respected by compensating us competitively to our surrounding communities, and show us that you trust us to use our time effectively without needing to control double the amount of meetings this year, when we really need the time to unpack what we've been given to teach and get good at the new initiatives and become masters of our trade again. Many of us have been here long enough to be considered veteran teachers, and some of our teachers are brand-new to this field and are just trying to survive. Some of us are here in the home stretch before retirement but are still putting in every last ounce of effort before they leave just to make learning fun. And some of our teachers have recently left us, and some are seeking other opportunities because of the state that this town is in. Like our students, I came here tonight with a very worried belly. I knew I wanted to speak to the community, however, every day when those students come into school, as teachers, we encourage them to take the risks, and that's what I'm doing here tonight. Some of our students dream of being teachers when they grow up, and it's time to show them that the teachers in this town are valued and respected by giving us a fair contract. Thank you.
Move on to the consent agenda. Can you make a motion? Just move to approve the consent agenda. Second. Is there any adjustment? All those in favor? No opposed? Consent agenda? Um, report, our student member is not here this evening, so we'll start with our, well, whatever it was on, direct.
No, Sharon, if Sharon has any...
Welcome, Sharon. Thank you.
Yes, I'm happy to be here. I know that Jean and I exchanged an email earlier this week around what she was going to report out on her subcommittee, so I'll leave those items for her.
Thank you.
In terms of special education, I know we have some vacancies for some teachers that we're continuing to try and recruit for. One of those is at the Coolidge Middle School, and the other is our team chairperson, who will be shared between a couple of elementary schools. So we've conducted interviews for both roles. We are moving along through that process, and we just are not yet ready to conclude either process. That's where we're at with the staffing vacancies. Okay?
Thank you. Mrs. Kelly next.
Hi, so I'm going to spend most of my time talking about MCAS from the 5,000-foot view tonight, but a couple of quick updates. We are busy in learning and teaching. We had a release day on October 5th, which went really well. We had a lot of district presentations at all levels. One of the really exciting things was that we fully trained all of our elementary staff in the New Fountas and Penel Benchmark Assessment Edition 3. So that was done on October 5th, and now we're in the process of using that new system.
Can I just clarify there? So our, if I recall, in our district, Joshua Eaton was using the Edition 3. We saw and heard a lot about that.
Right, Joshua Eaton had been using it.
But the other schools have been using Fountas and Penel, but Edition 2.
Correct.
Okay.
And the new addition is a little bit different. It's actually a fair amount different, and the Fountas and Penel folks chose not to do a real close crosswalk between the two. So, yeah, we're really excited about that. So they're currently using them. That training went really well. We had a number of other training. We are in the process of planning November 6th training, which is our election day. We have, right now, I think about 15 or 16 different plans for the day, depending on subject, grade, location, so we're ironing out all of those. We have some really exciting workshops planned. We have some... One of those is at the Coolidge Middle School, and the other is our team chairperson, who will be shared between a couple of elementary schools. So we've conducted interviews for both roles. We're moving along through that process, and we just are not yet ready to conclude either process. That's where we're at with the staffing vacancies.
Thank you. This is Kelly Nix.
Hi. So I'm going to spend most of my time talking about MCAS from the 5,000-foot view tonight. But a couple of quick updates. We are busy in learning and teaching. We had a release day on October 5th, which went really well. We had a lot of district presentations at all levels. One of the really exciting things was that we fully trained all of our elementary staff in the New Fountas and Penel Benchmark Assessment Edition 3. So that was done on October 5th, and now we're in the process of using that new system.
Can I just clarify there? So our, if I recall, in our district, Joshua Eaton was using the Edition 3. We saw and heard a lot about.
Right. Joshua Eaton had been using it.
But the other schools had been using Fountas and Penel, but Edition 2.
Correct. And the new addition is a little bit different. It's actually a fair amount different, and the Fountas and Penel folks chose not to do a real close crosswalk between the two. So, yeah, we're really excited about that. So they're currently using them. That training went really well. We had a number of other training. We are in the process of planning November 6 training, which is our election day. We have, right now, I think about 15 or 16 different plans for the day, depending on subject, grade, location. So we're ironing out all of those. We have some really exciting workshops planned. We have some work being done at the high school in differentiation. The middle school teams are going to be unpacking some of the MCAS scores further to look for common threads. So we're excited about that. So we've been pretty busy with all of that work. We're continuing to work on curriculum work, especially around the area of the curriculum guides. The high school teams are working on them, and we're not going to be ready to show them to the public probably until after the holidays with our MASC visit and all of that. We're tying all of that in together, but we're working diligently on those, and as they become past the draft stage, we will be asking for public comments and feedback.
As you may have seen in the packet that was distributed, we have included, as we have historically, the 2020 budget calendar. And this is really meant to be used as guide to let the committee know how we walk through the budget process. And some of the main areas that we wanted to point out are really the areas that we will be involving the committee. We did have the financial forum last week on October 10th. It was actually here in the library. So we have received guidance from the town manager, so now we will begin working towards building out the specifics of the budget. As we've done historically, we will be looking to recruit some budget parents that we can involve throughout the process as we go through it. The goal this year is similar to last year. We will have an overview budget presentation on December 20th. Just for committee members, the schedule is after the minutes in the packet, so if you're looking for it. It's, sorry, I was sort of searching around. I wanted to make sure that everybody was on the page while we were talking. So right after the last page of the first set of minutes in the consent agenda. So similar to last year, we plan to do a budget review presentation on December 20th. We got a lot of positive feedback last year that that was helpful to walk through how we go about developing it, the various grants we have, going through some of the high-level cost center descriptions, so that when we move into the January timeframe, we can really focus on the budget. The goal is to have the budget books distributed to the committee by December 27th. We will start the budget discussions on January 3rd. Similar to last year, the first night, we will do a high-level overview, and we will then address the smaller cost centers, being administration, district-wide, and facilities. And at that point, we will also include any capital discussions as part of that. On January 7th, have the regular day budget presented. On January 17th, that is when we are targeting the public hearing as well as the special education budget. The following week, on the 24th, we will address any school committee questions that we've received, and that is also when we would anticipate doing the vote. So to allow adequate time between all of the presentations, the public hearing, and time to address the questions. For the charter, we will be presenting the final budget to the town manager on January 31st. We are scheduled to present to the finance committee on February 27th, and then finance committee will vote the budgets on March 13th to go forward to town meeting.
Hi. Gail. So one of the things I noticed last week and here, were the first budget the finance committee's looking at this year, or is that's a change? Why is that?
That was discussed and voted by the finance committee. We weren't necessarily part of that. I think it's too, I honestly don't know why they switched that around.
I'm just thinking in terms of time to be able to get ready for that.
I think we will be, ours will be done and voted on the 24th, so that will allow us a month to be able to prepare for it as well as it'll give them about, my goal is to actually give them the budget at the same time we give it to the town manager, so they'll have it for a month. So we'll ask them to provide any questions they have a week or two in advance. Is there a financial forum in this, the final two scheduled or no? No, at this point, there is not. Last year, it was different with the override and various discussions. As of right now, there has not been a second one scheduled. It will be nice to have a budget season that is not quite as Herculean as the last two and especially the last one.
Excellent.
So, Gail, on the schedule, the question I had is, it looks like we have the school committee overview presentation on December 20th and the budget book going out a week later?
Yes.
And then we come back with questions right after the New Year's holiday. I'm just, I'm sorry, just thinking through the process as it's been in the past, I've always found it very helpful to have that book in front of me when we did the overview presentations in the past, and what are we going to have when we're in that meeting?
So the overview presentation is not numerical or financial. It is a high-level discussion about how we develop the budget as well as what the various cost centers are. Historically, we used to try to discuss what each cost center was and what it included during the budget presentations, and we found it helpful last year to have that discussion ahead of time so that when we start the budget discussions, we're diving right into the financial aspect.
It's not specific information.
It's not numerical. It's more, it's the educational piece behind it, so people understand the process. And for those who not participate in financial forum, we give a brief overview of what the town manager presented as part of the financial forum, just how they do the budget. Mr. Robinson?
So I just, another question, Gail. So I remember last year, we moved the open hearing up. I can't remember the reason why, but we had to do it. And I see it, it's still in the beginning of the schedule, and I guess I don't, I think an open hearing is a time when people have heard all the presentations, and then they can come in and say what they want. This is actually going to happen before they've even seen the special ed, if I'm reading this right, right?
I don't think so.
It's the same night, so the open hearing would be at 7:00 PM, and then we, you follow what I'm, I think that the open hearing should be at the end, but that's just.
And one of the reasons.
I can't remember why we changed.
It was a bylaw requirement that we didn't fulfill.
And one of the other feedback that we had received from community members as well as the committee is that if we had the open hearing on the same night as the vote, there was not adequate time for the school committee to address questions and comments that the public brought up. So we wanted to make sure we had time for the public hearing and then time for school committee to discuss that. We can schedule the timing of the public hearing, though, after the special education presentation. We can schedule that for 8:30.
It has to be at 7:00, right?
No, it doesn't. You just have to specify the time, and you have to give adequate notice.
So if we schedule it after that period?
Yep.
Otherwise, we'd need to try to fit in your point. Yeah, we could, the other option would be to combine special ed and regular education on the same night, but we also wanted to make sure there were adequate time for the presentation, so that is one other item we could do is combine special ed and reg ed and have both presentations in the same night.
I think that my, I'm sorry, my understanding of an open hearing is when, at least from my perspective, I've wanted, I would have wanted to digest things and then come, you know, and then come back and trying to have questions together right after you've seen something might not be what some people like, but that's up to the chair.
We can adjust that and have, we've done it in the past where we have had regular education and special education present in the same night, so we can do that.
We can do it.
Nick, was that you?
Yeah, I support that, too. I think it'd be, so it looks like we have, if I'm counting right, after the budget book goes out and everyone has the specifics, we'll have four total school committee meetings. The last one is for voting deliberation, so working backwards. I like Mr. Robinson's idea of having the focus of that second-to-last meeting, that third meeting really being public input, and then have, using the first two meetings to get the narrative out there and the explanations out there, because the information's kind of flowing into the school committee and the public in the first two. The public is commenting the third one, and then the school committee deliberating in the last one.
We'll make that, we can make that.
That's kind of how we always had it.
Okay. Let me, I'm going to pass out, we've now passed October 1st, so we have the official October 1st enrollment, which we have to send to the state. So I just want to highlight a few things. This probably would have looked much different if we did not have an override, valid question pass last April. So I think we need to continue to acknowledge that the override restored several positions or added positions that we would not have had. So for example, if you take a look at the elementary enrollment piece, which is by school, you can see pretty much our class sizes are in good shape. Wood End, we do have a couple that grades two and three, they're a little bit higher. But overall, our class sizes are very good. Remember, there were three elementary teachers as part of the override that were restored. So those class sizes would have looked much different. If you flip it to the other side, our middle schools, if you remember, there were seven teachers at the middle school level that were restored in grades six, seven, and eight. And then at the high school, we added five positions, five FTE positions as well, which class sizes are very manageable at the high school right now. So overall, our enrollment is pretty steady, and our class sizes across the board are very, very good. So that's the enrollment piece. I don't know if anyone had a question?
Sure.
Yes.
Excellent to acknowledge that, yeah, those seven, that's our middle school. We have middle schools in Reading. We don't have junior high schools. We have middle schools with a middle school model and seven teachers in form, so.
Yeah, how can we get those people on there?
This will be in the final packet that we post.
And we just handed out some extras. Mr. Robinson?
John, I think, I think the last one that we got, last enrollment update, grade four at Wood End, is that, was that there?
The 22s.
Grade four at Wood End, 25, 24.
25, 24.
That's grade three.
Grade three, I'm sorry.
Yep.
And then grade two as well.
Right. They're high.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, I don't have classrooms space that I could add a teacher at Wood End.
So just something we gotta keep an eye on.
Well, grade three is within your guidelines.
Right.
Grade three, it's grade, it's grade two that's not.
I was looking at the number above, that's why. The classrooms.
Do you want me to continue?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and I know some of this I had in the weekly newsletter, but I just want to highlight two of our Reading Memorial High School teachers, Kariklis and Megan Howie. They had articles published on Reading history in the Daily Times Chronicle. It's a two-part titled Lives Lived Unfree: Stories of Reading's Enslaved. In the articles, they examined some of the stories of enslaved people who lived, worked, died, and were owned as property in Reading. I think the important thing about this is that they're using the same research process that they're, they're asking their students to do. They're modeling that process for their students, and obviously, being published is also, is also an honor. So I just, I wanted to recognize the good work that they were doing. I also want to recognize the work that some of our teachers and administrators did at the National PBIS Conference in Chicago. Chris Kelly was one of those administrators that went. The theme of the conference was PBIS, and for those that don't know, PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports, creating, celebrating safe and learning environments. This is a national conference that because, and it is funded by the School Climate Transformation Grant, this is in our final year. It's a conference that we've been attending the last several years so that we can learn best practices from school districts all over the country on how to implement the multi-tiered system of supports that we've been working on. So our Wood End team of Dr. Joanne King, the principal, Lisa Breed, who's a school psychologist, Jackie Pelusi, who's a special educator, as well as Chris Kelly was there, and Courtney Fogarty, who is our data coach, and.
Sarah Lebec.
Sarah Lebec and.
Lawrence Vell.
Lawrence Vell, thank you, who's our behavioral health coach. So they did a booth presentation. It featured a poster and dialogue entitled "A Roadmap to Building and Implementing Successful Tier Two Supports for Students." And they showcased several of the tools that they are using currently in their tier-two supports. So I just want to, I want to recognize that and congratulate them on a job well done on a national presentation. Last evening, I also had the, I had the opportunity to be part of a panel discussion at the University of Massachusetts Lowell. It was on gun violence. It was called Voices for Action. It was the 23rd Pana Chuck Symposium on Education Research Policy and Practice. On the panel, which had many different stakeholders, including students, public safety, teachers, principal, and community leaders, I served in two roles as a panel member, both as a superintendent of a public school district and co-chair of the State Safe and Supportive Schools Commission. Each of us had an opportunity to speak and then take questions. The keynote speaker was Peter Cunningham, who was the Assistant Secretary for Communications and Outreach during the Obama, for the U.S. Department of Education during the Obama administration, and currently works in Chicago. He's the director and founder of Education Post, so he was, he was the keynote. So it was very well-attended. We had about 200 people at the symposium, and it was a, it was a, it was a pretty, I was honored and humbled to be a part of that panel discussion. And my role is to speak from those two hats and how gun violence has impacted us as a, as a school district and also from a safe and supportive schools level. That is my report.
I have a couple. So the CPAC met a couple of weeks ago, and I believe it was Ms. Stewart's first meeting, and I know parents were really excited to meet our new interim director of Student Services. I really appreciated her being there. The big news out of that meeting is Sarah McLaughlin volunteered to and was elected to serve as chair of the CPAC for this academic year. Personally, I've known Sarah for years, and she's a really smart lady and a strong advocate for students with special education needs. I'm ecstatic to have, she's like us, she's a volunteer, taking time out of her family and her career to do this work, so very grateful to Sarah. Two upcoming dates on CPAC. On Wednesday, October 24th, at 7:00 p.m. in the Reading Police Community Room, there's a Basic Rights in Special Education workshop, helpful for anybody in the community who's interested in learning more about special education, but really vital for parents who are new to the system, whose students have recently been identified as having special educational needs and wanting to learn about the law and how it's implemented in Massachusetts. So that's a really good workshop. And the next CPAC business meeting is Tuesday, November 13th, 7:00 p.m., tentatively here in the library, but it's a tentative location, so for all of those meetings, people are going to want to check the CPAC website. That's CPAC. Can I keep going? Yes. Reading 375. I'm very happy to inform the committee and the broader public who haven't read it in local media that Cummings Properties granted $1,000 to Reading 375 to support an anniversary celebration next year of our town. So we certainly are grateful to Cummings Properties for their generosity, but also to Sarah and Tom Brucolaccio of Innovations and Optics, Inc. This program is a client-directed grant program. They're a longtime client of Cummings Property, and they had the opportunity to say, this is a local nonprofit that I think I would like to see supported. So we owe them a debt of gratitude as well. It's a really nice, nice thing for the committee. And on Friday, November 9th, there will be the third trivia night at 7:00 p.m. Fun night, everyone should go. Friday, November 9th, 7:00 p.m., RCTV Studios. I've done the last two. It's a really family-friendly, fun, fun, fun evening. I have one more report. Dr. Doherty just described a panel discussion that he was invited to participate in. What he did not tell the committee is that at that panel discussion, Dr. Doherty was awarded the 23rd Annual Alumni Award on behalf of the UMass Lowell College of Education for being an outstanding leader and alumnus of the UMass Lowell College of Education. So I just wanted to share briefly with the committee what was shared with the public about Dr. Doherty that night when he received this honor. Dr. Doherty has a Bachelor of Science degree and his Master's of Education in Curriculum and Instruction from the University of Massachusetts Lowell, and his doctorate from Seton Hall University. Since 2015, Dr. Doherty has been a member of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Safe and Supportive Schools Commission. He was elected co-chair to this commission this year in 2018. Much of his work has focused on promoting the social and emotional wellness of students in Reading and across the Commonwealth. In 2016, the Middle Sex Partnership for Youth, Inc., presented him with. In 2016, the Middle Sex Partnership for Youth, Inc., presented him with the Dr. Patrick A. Scatini Jr. Award for his regional leadership in social-emotional learning, and the Massachusetts Lowell Psychologist Association presented him with the Friend of Children Award for his continued effort to improve the lives of children. In 2018, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents recognized his significant contributions to the field by presenting him with the Christos Dawalas Award. So that's a really wonderful honor for you, and I'm sure the whole committee offers the congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bralski, do you have one other update that you might have gotten out of too early? I'm sorry, or too early? No, too early.
No.
There's a ballgame on, so a lot of us are very interested. Don't know if anybody knows, a little baseball being played tonight in Houston. Mr. Robinson?
I don't have a liaison report, but I did want to mention, I think most people know that Dr. Nyhan had successful kidney transplant surgery earlier in the week, and I think he came home today or tomorrow, so.
Yeah.
It's exciting.
Say your, keep your prayers for him, and hopefully that continues successfully.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Draxler, would you like to use your?
Sure. I have a RACASA liaison report. So at the RACASA annual meeting, they reported on the town and school programs, which engage parents, police, and educators to support and educate people about the issues of substance use disorders. Hidden in plain sight happened and had a steady stream of interested adults. Part of it was seeing, the interest was in seeing all the hiding places that are sold. It's quite unnerving, actually, but also the conversations that happened between people that went. I found it really interesting when I was volunteering there. And also gratitude was expressed for the work of the RACASA Board, the outreach coordinator, Julianne De Angelis, and director Erica McNamara. And there was a wonderful surprise because it turned out that Erica McNamara has come back to us. So she will be director again of the Reading RACASA. So that was great, and that got a huge ovation. Dr. Sherry Vandennacher, who unfortunately can't be here today, gave a very poignant presentation and personal presentation entitled "What I Wish I Knew When Someone You Love Suffers from a Substance Abuse Disorder," a substance use disorder. And her talk actually can be seen on RCTV and the link on YouTube and the RCTV YouTube channel, and the, her talk can also be read in the Daily Times Chronicle in the October 5th issue. She spoke with wisdom, hard-earned through personal family experience, and I highly recommend watching her give the talk. It was powerful and helpful.
And the article was in the Reading, her talk was in the Reading Chronicle, October 5th? Okay, that's agenda hidden right.
So I have a couple quick reports on the ATRAC liaison, and I attended the ATRAC meeting, and I can't remember exactly the date of it, but the voted, ATRAC voted to support, there's a ballot question, ballot question three, they voted to support that ballot question, and they also voted to basically ask the board of selectmen to discuss and potentially support that ballot question. And the selectmen are actually going to do that on October 30th. Just so that people are aware, the ballot question, the ballot question would, if it fails, will remove laws that protect transgendered individuals in places of public accommodation. But in terms of the schools, I want to assure the committee, and Dr. Doherty and I have consulted with our attorney, and I since heard Representative Lewis speak on this, so I'm incredibly clear now. But the law, in 2011, laws were passed that provided the protection of, for transgendered individuals in schools, housing, and employment. At that time, Jason Lewis actually spoke of the struggle that it was that that, when they passed that in 2011, it was already a five-year struggle. And at that time, they removed the public accommodation from the law. So that's why we, as a school district, you know, this is something that we've been working with for a long time. And in 2016, they passed the law for public accommodation. So the ballot question could change the public accommodation, but it will not change in any way the 2011 law that provides protections for transgendered individuals in schools, employment, and housing. So I just wanted the committee to be clear, and again, Jason Lewis gave the talk. So this week, actually, Dr. Draxler and I attended a event, and I, that Red had, which was to inform people about the question, and so that's why I did hear Jason Lewis sort of explain that, and he was, obviously, lived and breathed that as he was doing it as a senator. But also, I just wanted to acknowledge that a member of our guidance department was that evening, a great job on a panel, Sarah Munner. Did I say her name right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Did a great job on the panel there. And let me think, like, the rally is going to be, we have an item on the agenda, so I think that's it.
Can I just add a point on that?
We talked at that panel about how the students are protected in the schools, but as we know from our, from our emotional, social-emotional behavioral programs here, that students actually bring in their experiences from outside of the school. And so we do protect our students in the school, but they come in vulnerable from what they're experiencing outside of the school. And the panelists were very clear about how students are looking to see who's going to support them through question three and who's not. And that makes them even more vulnerable, and it's a population that has an exponentially higher suicide and suicidal ideation rate than their age peers. And so they also talked about how important it is for people to show their support for these students and for people in gen, in general who are trans, so to think hard and get educated. And Freedom for All has a website, so if you're wondering, you can refer to that website for additional information. And it's a great website with Mythbusters and information. There's a lot of fear that's being promoted by the opposition to this bill, and it's important to really get educated about it. Violence prevention experts and police are supporting a yes on question three because there is no evidence. So I just wanted to make the point that children bring in what they experience outside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
People ready to go on to our new business? So Kristin, thank you, and we want to especially thank you for bringing us a snack. Many of us have been here all day. Some of us got here at dinnertime at 5:00 or 5:30, and we're appreciating the snack.
Oh, you're welcome. Well, I know you had an executive session, so it's always self-serving when I'm nice. No, I'm just kidding.
There you go.
I just wanted to let you know, these are things that we've started serving the students. The breads I brought specifically because there are five flavors. We don't just do them, we tried some of them last year with some parents at the Parent University because we sponsored the snack for the students and the parents and took it as an opportunity for a, an communication opportunity with parents to have a little back and forth. But they're a whole-grain bread. This is what they look like when they're wrapped, and the kids can get them in the flavors that I put on the little cards. We can get banana, pumpkin, zucchini, chocolate, blueberry, and pumpkin. Pumpkin's seasonal, though. But I only brought it because it was just something different, and we are really trying, breakfast is not our biggest program at the middle and high school, but we just thought that it's always take an opportunity to show you what we're doing. And the parfaits just seem to be, everybody seems to like them wherever we bring them, so you need a little protein. But the reason I was invited tonight was to discuss with you something that's been in the news for years, unpaid meal debt for students. And we've had a strong policy for many years, but as the world evolves and changes, our department, although we are very good about following the law and policy, has felt very uncomfortable with some of the things that we had because we don't want, we want to do what's right for kids, we always want to put the kids first, and not having money to pay for a lunch, or parents who haven't applied for free or reduced lunch, or put money on an account is really not a student's problem. And so we don't want to be in a situation where we're going to have to take a meal away from a child and give him an alternate lunch. We've been able to avoid that, even though it was in our policy, but it, it just is getting more and more challenging. A lot of people, the charges have increased slightly, but not dramatically in the past few years, and we've had a really good handle on it, but we want to make sure that before, and in Massachusetts, there is a bill, in Massachusetts, that's their nickname in lunch-shaming bill, that could pass in Massachusetts, which would require this in the future. Now, I don't know what that bill will have, so this may not stand. If that passes, we may need to change some things, but I think this is a good attempt at getting on the right page. So I had done some research, got a lot of different policies from other towns. Wakefield, where I worked there as well, had decided they wanted to redo their policy. It's a little bit different than this, but this, a good portion of this came from Milton Public Schools, and some from Bill Ricca, and some was from ours. But we wanted to kind of put in a much easier-to-read document that was more about the content of what the intention was, and try to put everything simple for parents. So I know on page one, there is a S missing under borrowing meals for a meal, money for a meal, so there's a typo in there that I already caught, but, and I know you go through and read it, but are there any, I don't know if there's any questions about it before we start, or how you want to handle going forward, or if you want any background of why?
Hold on, I just want to have Dr. Draxler read our motion to accept the, to get that motion on the table, and then we'll do the questions.
Okey-dokey.
Move to accept the first reading of revised policy EFDA collection of payment for school meals.
Well, now we'll continue the discussion.
All right.
Did anyone have any questions on the draft, new draft policy? For specific questions?
If I can, if I can just add, usually when we do the policy review, if there are questions that crop up in between, then they would send them, the committee would send it to us ahead of time, and then we would answer them for the second reading.
You know, one of the things I thought was important to note is that we added a section about donations towards student debt because Gail and I actually had worked on last year. Some people had, we have the seniors, when they leave, they have to either pay their debt before they get their cap and gown, or we have to know if they want us to move the money to a sibling, or give them a reimbursement, or some of them just leave it there, and they never tell us what they want to do. So we have some things towards student debt where it has to do with the donation. So we had adopted kind of a procedure of how we would manage it, and we thought it was good to note it here so that if people were looking at the policy, they would know how we would handle those monies and principles, and I would not have to guess of how to divout the money. At least, this is transparent. So that was never in the policy before, so I just wanted to note that.
Mr. Robinson?
Two questions. Do we have any kind of outreach to students who are graduating with, leaving a balance to say, "Would you like to donate?"
Yes, we, so what we do is we start in May, and we send out emails to all the senior parents and tell them that they need to start looking at their balance and start either spending it down or thinking about if they've kept it high, what they'd like to do with it, and telling them the options. And then we kind of send those out intermittently as we get closer. And then once it's graduation week, once they've gone into finals, and we know they're probably not going to eat again, but they could, they start having us move it to siblings. Sometimes it waits till the next year, and we can get into that account. They kind of sit in grade 13 through that year, through this year, and then, and then we can move it, so.
How much unpaid debt do we typically have across the school?
We typically run between $800 and $1,000 through the year, and we usually end with less than 300.
Wow.
But our policy has had teeth, so we've had account caps and things like that in the past, so I did express a fear that this could grow, and I might need some additional support. Right now, the managers at every building send out electronic notices, a minimum of once per week, letting parents know if their child has any debt, a penny or more. And they send, the middle schools, they think, send out low-balance alerts because the parents there have asked for that. And the, and it does note in here the options for parents so that they know they can set low-balance limits on their online account, and it's all, they can use it all for free, and it will send them an email letting them know when it's at the balance that they want to know when they should reload. So we don't, we haven't had a really bad problem in Reading, and I'm hoping that we can stay on top of it, and we do really well with free and reduced students who don't reapply, trying to communicate with them one-on-one and solving those things on their own. But I just fear that without the account cap and without some of the penalties, then we could run into a problem where it might grow, so I don't want to be here next year and have you say, "Why did it grow?"
Mr. Robinson?
So Kristin, on the section where borrowing money for meal...
Yes.
So I'm just, and I throw this out to the committee, I guess, I don't think that milk should be, that should be part of the borrowing and not, not considered one of the three. I guess so it should be three plus the milk.
So the milk is part of a meal when you buy a meal, but if you bring a meal from home and you didn't have a milk, we would let you charge a milk.
Right, but the way that's worded is, if you're borrowing for a meal, at least the way I read it is, if you pick three out of the five, and one of the five is milk, what I'm...
No.
Okay.
No, that's just defining what a meal is. So a meal, as recognized by the United States Department of Agriculture, is a minimum of three of the components. So milk is one of the five offered components. They could take all five if they want. It's just that they couldn't come in and just take a slice of pizza and charge it. They would have to take an actual meal with fruits and vegetables, but they could also charge milk just by itself.
All right, so, but my question is, does the milk go toward the three that they get to take?
Yeah.
So I'm saying...
No, it's not just three. They have to take three, but they can take five. So maybe we want to reword it.
They can take five in a, in a bar, okay.
They have to, every reimbursable meal, they have to take a minimum of three.
Components.
But they have five.
Offered.
Is that what they can take?
Correct. Right.
And, but they, and they can take up to five.
Right. If you wanted, if you were charging a meal, you could take a hamburger on a bun with strawberries, carrots, and a milk. So there's your five components, and you could take all five, but you would only have to take three. You could take a hamburger and strawberries, and you could still get your meal charged, but you have to take a meal. The USGA is really, really specific about what meat, what a meal is, and so if we're going to charge it and hit that meal button, it has to have the minimum number of components. But we would let the absolute female, we're not limiting them to three.
I missed, I missed...
Nope, that's fine.
Thank you. Dr. Draxler?
I was just wondering, can you talk a little bit about what it's, what it's like when a child can't have an a la carte?
Yeah.
Like what, what are the a la carte items, and are they, is this, how frustrating is it for the children that they can't have that choice if they don't have the money?
So it can be, it can be frustrating because it's whatever's like extra or a snack-type item, or they could come up, a lot of kids will have a bagged lunch and want to come up and buy an apple, but if they don't have any money, they can't buy anything that's not part of a meal. So if they've exhausted their money and they charged a meal and they want to buy an extra slice of pizza, we usually say, "Do you have money?" And they say, "No." We say, "You can't get the extra thing, you can just get your meal, sweetie. Just tell mom and dad, and you can add it to your account." Trying to minimize the impact on it. But I'm sure some kids do get upset if their friends are buying something and they want to, they can't. But we try to make sure that they're fed and ready to learn at every meal, but the a la carte stuff, you know, it is the extra stuff, so we need to make sure that they have cash for that.
So if there's, I'd like to try to move, move it along, so this, since this is the first reading, and see if we can approve the first reading and then remaining questions. Would you go through Dr. Doherty?
Sure.
Do that. So the motion was made, it's on the table, it was seconded by Ms. Bralski. So all those in favor of approving the first reading?
Aye.
And that's five, zero. Thank you very much. And especially thank you very much for substance tonight. What was that? We have the, oh. We have the, oh, Mrs. Kelly was up.
My role here tonight is to try to unpack the MCAS from last spring. As I'm sure you read in our memo that went out several weeks ago, the state really did a great job, I think, of really looking at our accountability and really making it, I think, a more fair playing field. Our schools and our districts are being compared within ourselves and less comparison with other districts, which I think is really exciting. I have some question about some of the targets they set. The targets that they set for this year are baseline targets, so it'll be interesting to see where they go from this year. So, my job is to sort of walk you through what the new accountability system looks like, over our MCAS results at sort of the 5,000-foot view of the whole district, as well as some small details around school or grade level results. Just so you know, all of the principals will be sharing school-specific MCAS scores, I believe, at their November meeting, so you'll be.
Yeah, most of them.
Most of them are in November. And as we go along, I'll be talking about some of the data digging that we've started to do and will continue to do. We'll talk about the accountability report, which thankfully, the state has gotten rid of those numbered accountability, and they have a better determination of accountability, I think, that we will all agree. It's a better way to assess accountability. And again, it's new, so we're still unpacking it. So, most of you probably realize, but last year, we unveiled year two of the Next Generation MCAS. Some people refer to it as the MCAS 2.0, and that was done in grades three through eight in math and ELA, and it was all computer-based. Most districts are completely computer-based, Reading is no exception with that. In addition, last year, they continued with what they call the legacy MCAS. I call it the old MCAS. Some of it was done computerized, but it was still the old test, and it was assessed differently. I'll get to a little bit of that. That is the grade five and eighth science, as you know, or you may know. We do science in fifth grade, eighth grade, and then, they call it a 10th grade science. In Reading, we do it as a ninth grade science. Our ninth graders take the biology test, and then, the 10th in math and ELA, which is required, the three tests at the high school level are required for graduation requirements, as well as part of our accountability. And we'll be talking a little bit about the new accountability system. I'll do my best to walk you through it. It is pretty complicated, and the state, when I delivered the memo, they had released the accountability specifics about, what, six or seven days before that, John? So, we didn't have a lot of time before that went out at the beginning of October, and we're still unpacking it. But, just so you know, that Every Child Succeeds Act, the ESSA law, which is the federal law, really outlined what states had to do to be accountable. You may remember that whole no child left behind situation that we're in, and then, there was some waivers around that. Massachusetts was one of the states that had a waiver, there were many others. The ESSA law is now sort of supplanting all of that work, and we now need to report out on many things, some of which we hadn't reported out on. Massachusetts was ahead of the curve in a lot of ways. We had already looked at growth, we had already looked at achievement, we had already looked at attendance. There are many states that weren't, and now, that's a requirement federally. This is the Next Generation MCAS, which is that newer MCAS 2.0, which frankly, we're still working on understanding that. The questions are a little bit different, they got rid of the formulaic stuff for years and years. The old MCAS had that super-long fourth-grade composition that was all-day writing. Now, all of the writing is embedded, so it is a very different test. It is done on the computer, which obviously, as an early childhood person, I have some concerns with in third grade especially, how much of that is user error and things like that. But, our kids, our kids are doing pretty well with it. So, within this achievement level, this is the Next Generation, they gave us the scores and they basically, it's from not meeting expectations in the 440 to 469 range, partially meeting expectations in the 470 to 499 range, meeting expectations 500 to 529, and then, exceeding expectations. Now, again, we heard, the student letters were just sent out, so parents are still unpacking this. They will really be addressed at the building levels, all of the information around what, where did your child test, what does that mean, those kind of questions. So, some highlights, we had some really strong scores in ELA in grades third, fifth, sixth, and eighth, and we had some really strong scores in math in three, five, six, and eight. This detailed chart was in my memo that went out to all families, but I think it's kind of hard to read on this, but it's in our packets as well. One of the things that we like to do is group meeting and exceeding expectations, because those are two things that we, that's sort of our benchmark, we would like all kids to meet them or exceed them. And our scores were really a lot higher than the state in almost all the categories, and we're really excited about that. Overall, when we grouped all of the scores, we were about 17 or 15 points higher than the state average in exceeding and meeting. So, when we look at the change in scaled scores, the next page, one of the reasons why we included this in our slideshow is really to look at the state average versus Reading's average in the change from 2017 to 2018. Because each MCAS is done separately, they don't regurgitate a lot of the same test questions. The ones that they release are gone, but the ones that they don't have, MCAS is one of the few tests in the country really that changes a lot variability. So, we look at the state scores, and when we see that scores have gone down, that's sometimes an area that we go, oh, okay, then that, this year's test, seventh grade, was harder. So, for instance, when we look at grade seven ELA, the state went down 2.1, we also went down 2.2. So, there was a little variation between the state. Now, in most cases, we're much higher than the state, so that's really what we'd like to be, is our benchmark. But, we also take a look at this data because each test, each grade is so specific, and all of the students take it. So, for instance, in grade seven math, everyone is taking the same test statewide. There's only one grade seven math test, there's only one grade eight math test, those kind of things. So, we look at the state averages, and then, we look at our averages and we say, all right, do we do a lot better than the state? We hope so. And if we didn't, why didn't we? So, if you look, grade four ELA, district-wide, that, we didn't do as well as the state did from year one, from 2017 to 2018. So, that's something that we're in the process of unpacking. What did, and of course, the challenge is always that they don't always release all the questions. So, standards they're aligned to, but we don't always know. In fact, we know very few questions. Any of them that are released, we'll be looking at. So, that's what this slide is to show you. And then, this is just a change in our overall scores of how we have improved from 2017, which is the first year of this new MCAS, MCAS 2.0, to this past cycle, and some pretty dramatic changes. Now, again, you might say, oh, jeez, what happened in grade seven math? You went down 11, you know, the, where your difference between exceeding and meeting is 11, which obviously, that's something we're looking at. But, when you go to the slide before, you look and you say, oh, well, everyone in the state went down. So, that obviously, grade seven test looked differently than last year. Obviously, it's a different group of cohort kids, but we certainly are not minimizing, when we look at negative scores from one year to the next, we certainly look at it. Overall, we're, we're looking at that pretty strongly. This is our, so we also have our sort of old-school MCAS test, the legacy, they call it, and they're judged a little bit differently, but if you look at, just because we're talking about where we were, advanced and proficient, from 2017 and 18, our grade 10 ELA, one point up from the last year, grade 10 math, down. Now, when we look at the, wait a minute with your questions on that, because we'll look at the overall math scores, which are pretty strong, but certainly, that's something we're going to be looking at. Grade nine science, six percentage points down from the year before. Grade eight science, minus four, and grade five science, up 11. So, one of the exciting things, I think, from a curriculum perspective, which is of course, my hat that I wear, is that, as you know, the district put a lot of time and money to elementary science curriculum. In three, four, and five, we're now doing some additional work in K to two this year. We're seeing the fruits of that labor. This is the third year of that implementation, so our fifth graders that took the test last year had it as fourth graders and as fifth graders. The kids who take it in 2019 will have had third, fourth, and fifth. We fully expect that to pay dividends in eighth grade as well, but we're definitely looking at that from a middle school perspective of, you know, what does that look like? Overall, our science scores are usually pretty high. Our fifth grade is a dramatic jump, and I think it's because of the work that was done prior to me coming to the district and the work that continues to be done by the elementary So, if you look at these slides, these slides will show you grade by grade where we kind of measured out from 2017 to 2018. So, again, for the most part, we try to group exceeding and meeting into one ball of wax. Sometimes, we go down a little bit in exceeding, but then, we go up with meeting, and overall, our meeting and exceeding is higher. In this case, grade eight, we actually went up in exceeding and we went up in meeting, so that was pretty exciting for us. Overall, there was an 11% change in eighth grade across the district. Sorry, skipped seventh grade. Seventh grade also had a few challenges. Our exceeding stayed the same at 15%. Our meeting expectations, I can't read it from here.
Went down five.
Wrong glasses with me. 55 to 60, is that what?
Yeah, went down five, yeah.
Went down five. So, that's something that we'll look at. That means that a few more kids didn't get to that meeting expectation, which is definitely where we would like to see our kids reach that achievement. Eighth grade had an overall exceeding meeting of up 4%. The exceeding expectations jumped quite a bit to 19%, and again, I can't read that for whatever reason.
53 to 50.
Thank you. 53 to 50, but overall, our numbers were higher there. Grade five also went up exceedingly well in ELA. We went up 16 percentage points overall, and you can see some pretty dramatic gains there. Grade four, although it did go down a bit, it minus two. You can see, this is what I was talking about, although our exceeding went down a little bit, our meeting went up a little bit. So, instead of being four percentage points off, it was only two, but we certainly are looking to close that gap. Grade three, 12% in exceeding and 54, that's a jump of 8%. Grade eight math, jump of 13%, which is a real high jump for us. 15% in exceeding and, is that 58?
Yes.
And eating. Sorry, I should have grabbed the glasses off there. Yeah, Sharon, thank you. Yeah, oh, yeah. So, grade seven math is definitely one that we are unpacking to find out why we had less students meet expectations than we would like. An 11% drop for us is huge, so we're definitely going to be unpacking that in the weeks to come. Again, I started with the state averages. That test was a harder test. The state overall went down, but our numbers went down more than we would expect, looking at just the Reading perspective. Grade six went down one percentage point, but overall, I think, 8%. We doubled our exceeding scores, which are awesome, and our meeting expectations were relatively close. Grade five math, overall, a jump of 7%. Grade four math, fourth grade often tends to be a tough testing year. The test seems to jump quite a bit from third to fourth grade, I think. Having actually served on one of the writing teams for MCAS in third grade, I worked on that for about three years. The third grade is a mindful test with child's developmental level and really thinking them as an early test taker, and then, they hit fourth grade. So, I think in general, most districts see fourth grade as sort of a hard testing cycle because the test looks a lot different than the third grade test. But, again, we're going to look at that. Mostly, I would say, meeting expectations were even from last year. It's, we have a few less exceeding expectations. Third grade math, within one percentage point of last year, relatively high showing there. So, I'm going to continue unless you have questions about that specific part. Yes, Mr. Bowman?
I actually have four, but I'll just, one. Just the quick question I have is what's going on with grade four ELA? So, when I, when I look at all of these, that was the only one in your slide. Excellent slide, by the way. I always go right to the negative. I should, I should ask, this is a really nice presentation, I appreciate that. The thing that jumped out in the slide, we don't have them numbered here, it's the one that says, MCAS changes in scaled scores 17 to 18.
Is it further up?
Yeah, it's right at the beginning of your presentation, and it's the only area where I see a big negative in RPS and a big up in the state, a big positive in the state.
Yeah, yeah, that was one that I highlighted when we first started talking.
Yeah.
When I first started talking. Yeah, I mean, that's something that we're definitely unpacking, and the work that we're doing on ELA this year, it's strong. We're doing a lot. As you know, last year, we did writing workshop this year. We're doing reader's workshop, and we're doing a lot of PD embedded, as well as the curriculum guides that have now been shared with all teachers. So, I think that the fourth grade teams are really looking at that strongly to say, are we actually hitting all of the standards? Sometimes, with the test, it's as simple as missing one standard item. I know a couple of years ago, I worked with a team that hadn't fully finished the fractions unit in fourth grade, so every fraction question was wrong for the most part, and there were six questions that year. Another year, there'd be two. So, it significantly impacted. Now, I will tell you that we have not unpacked it to that level of detail yet. Next Wednesday, at our elementary release days, we are working, every school, I know Eaton has already done some of the work, but all of the other schools are following the same protocol, where every single teacher in the building, including specialists, kindergarten teachers, first grade, second grades, because MCAS is a school-wide thing, our learning and teaching department helped the principals with kind of coming up with a protocol where we're digging deep into some of this data, and then dividing up by grades and really looking at it from that, you know, very, very intense look.
Good.
You had other questions?
I do, I can let others speak, speak to you. Up to you.
I just have, can I, was yours negative? No.
No.
I was just going to say.
Very neutral question.
Okay. No, I have, I was just looking as we were going through, looking at the not meeting, and I think most of the, most of it, the not meeting went down, which you have to, which is right for 2018, right?
Yep.
You want fewer kids not meeting expectations, and that looks like a pretty good story for, for most of it. I mean, I know those numbers are really, are very low, but they moved generally in the right direction.
And when we talk about the accountability, we'll talk a little bit about how the state has changed the accountability system to have us really focus on those kids that aren't meeting. Yeah.
Mrs. Brask?
I have a question. When you're, when you're looking at all of the factors that might explain a dip or a peak, do you ever look at the cohort of students? And what made me think of it is, and my memory could be wrong, but my memory was last year, our seventh grade scores were particularly high, and now, we have eighth grade scores that are particularly high. Now, at some point, you say, this might just be a particularly.
That is absolutely.
Yeah, and then, I imagine that, you know, even though that's a wonderful thing, it sort of sets a bar that's unrealistic for the next grades.
Well, we're going to talk about the targets that were set for us, especially at the high school, and that's part of it. When you do well, they set high targets. So, and that's great, we want to do well. I tend to look more at the kids that aren't making the meeting expectation and what can we do. But, yes, that's part of why we unpack this at the district-wide level, we kind of walk, we've already done district-wide data meetings about MCAS, and then, we walk principals through sort of a protocol of how do we dig deeper? And they have to do that at the building level, because they know the cohorts, they know the kids. You know, there, are there any surprises? What are the trends? And really look at it, even at the grade level, at specific students even, like, was there, was this a shock to you? And if the answer is yes, And if the answer is yes, then why?
Great, great.
Thank you.
Mr. Bob.
Yeah, so you got one of my four off the list.
There you go. Thanks, Jean.
So, a question, how does grade, any of, how do you compare, in all of these graphs, you're always comparing this year's grade to a different set of students last year who took a similar, but not the same test? So, where you have a dip, you know, comparing, well, let's say, take the grade four ELA example, look at grade three ELA and see if, you know, they're taking, if you learn that. But the second question I had was, I noticed that consistently, going back to the slide before the one I was just on, so, with the big data table that you did.
Yep.
And I've noticed this for a couple of years that I've been looking at these scores now. We seem to have between 1 and 4 and 1 and 3 students numerically that are in that partially meeting expectations, right? It's 25 to 35%. That's the student group that, for me, I'm very interested in the why there. What supports can we offer those students to help them to be, you know, doing that? Not that these tests really measure everything about a student, they don't. But have we looked at subpopulations in the same way the state does in that group? And really looking at, do these students, this 1 and 4, 1 and 3 student who's testing in the partially meeting, do they have things in common? Are there, you know, characteristics that they share? And those could be a wide range of things, and I know the state probably has a whole list of things.
So I guess the answer is it depends. If we have more than 20 students at a grade level in a subgroup in a school, then we have information about that, because we get those scores. So, for instance, if we had 20 students in third grade at a certain school that were free and reduced lunch, we would have that score. We would know how that population did. But, you know, because Reading is small, and we do have sort of small pockets of what the state would determine as high-needs populations, we don't always have that at the school level. So, yeah, we look at that, but I think, in some ways, at the school level, it's more individualized than that. It's more that whole MTRS stuff that we do with the tiered support of saying, all right, are these kids that are getting intervention? Are these kids working with our tutors? We're just finishing up the AMC testing, as I said before, we're doing the Fautis and Penel testing. Those kids that are not meeting benchmarks, they're already on our radar, especially at the elementary level. And in seventh, sixth, seventh, and eighth, at the release day, we're going to be unpacking MCAS and say, all right, so look at some of these cohorts, now what? What are we doing to differentiate instruction so that kids that are not, or are predicted to not do well on MCAS this year, how can we bolster that? And, you know, certainly, I think Reading is particularly mindful of, we don't teach to the test. We want to teach really well to the standards that are required. If we do that, we should really do well, right? But there are many districts that teach to the test, worksheet after worksheet, packets after packets. You know, our teachers are skilled, we trust their judgment, we're working on it, and, you know, I think you, somebody, whether it was Jean or you, said it, you know, this is a snapshot in time. This is two days in the life of a child. And it is the only kind of big test we have, but it's by no means the only test. When we meet our data team meetings, district-wide and school-wide, we look at other things, like attendance, which is now part of our accountability too. We look at the Fautis and Penel benchmarks. We look at AMC. In many of the subjects at the high school, they look at, you know, common assessments and midterms and things like that. So, you know, it's definitely a piece of the puzzle, but it's not the whole puzzle.
Last one.
Okay.
Curriculum.
Yep.
So I'd like to point, connecting the improvement in science for fifth grade with, I think it's the No-Adam curriculum that the taxpayers have generously helped us fund, or funded almost exclusively, actually. Have you, throughout the curriculum, been able to identify cohorts of students and see if there's kind of an enrichment in scores or statistics as curriculums or pacing guides or whatever? Are you able to match the input of effort in your role of helping teachers kind of stay in sync with the curriculum and the pace of education in their classrooms with, and the implementation of new curriculum as we buy them, new material, with how these numbers are?
So the No-Adam one is a nice one, because it's really easy to pinpoint, right? In the four months I've been here, no. No, I have not been able to do that yet. That's the goal. That's my three-to-five-year goal, is that we can really focus that closely and say, oh, okay, hmm, like, we just spent a lot of money on science at the high school. That should really help our science scores ultimately. Maybe this year, hopefully, definitely next year. Usually, curriculums take a year or two to really seed. The most companies will tell you, three to five years. I think, again, in Reading, we have pretty good luck with training our teachers, they're skilled, they work hard, so we get there. But, yeah, I mean, for instance, all the work that we're doing on reading workshop right now, will that pay off in our elementary ELA scores? Absolutely. I think one of the things, just being a resident of Reading and having a little bit more historical data than perhaps any other new assistant superintendent, is that, for me, consistency is key, right? So we have, we've had pockets of high scores and low scores, or schools that, out of the blue, didn't test well, and you're like, whoa, what happened? I think, for me, what I'm focusing on is that less silification of schools, that, you know, well, we're trying this, so let's try that, and really saying, all right, this is the benchmarking. We expect every school to try this and do this and use this, and then we still want your school to have unique culture points, of course. Every school does that well. But I think that that, as a curriculum director, that's my goal, is to get, you know, it shouldn't matter what school you go to, and they're all good schools, this we know. As far as testing, we see that. And I actually, one of the things that John and I were remarking on is our schools, elementary school to elementary school, don't look that remarkably different, which is exciting. But occasionally, it happens. This year, and when I get to it, you'll see, the middle school scores looked a little different. Next year could be completely the other way. Our middle schools are very, very similar in curriculum. That surprised us as well, because we look at it, we meet with them, those two principals work like this. And they're very, very well-run and well-run together. So that's kind of like, okay, what happened there? We have to really unpack that. Some of those, we don't have answers to. And, you know, next year, if we have another year of it, we'll now be like, okay, obviously, we didn't think we had a curriculum problem, maybe we do. So, I mean, these are all important questions.
Just going to add, this discussion came up when my children, who are, when we were first started school, you, the elementary schools, it was two superintendents ago, and the elementary schools were so different, you could have been in a different district. And it was, it was startling how different it was. You know, I know that it sometimes inspired, you know, we worked hard on this committee, we talked about it a lot, about, you know, aligning on the new edition of Fautis and Penel, and that that's important. I know that that presents, you know, work and alignment for the schools that were not on that edition, anytime we have to implement that. But I think to, it made me recall and think back to the differences, and at that time, there was absolutely, you know, dialogue beginning to happen about, you know, we should make it consistent. So I think we've done a tremendous amount.
I think in a short time, we're already much more consistent. And, again, my kudos to the principals and to the coordinators that are working so closely with myself. We're having a lot of very meaningful conversations about sort of like, this is what we expect all schools to do, and then certainly, you know, every principal wants to add personal touches to their own school. Yep. All right, any other questions? Yes?
Okay, yeah. No, just on this section, go ahead.
This is a good question about seventh grade math, because I had a seventh grader last year. Have you thought that, I don't know whether you isolated it to be a more difficult test in math or your syllabus in math, because last year, seventh grade, it was the first year that they collapsed the tracks, where it was, it's now, you know, it's not seven eight, and everybody else, so they used to be in the middle track. And I'm wondering, it was the middle and the slower, and now last year, the slowest kid had to, you know, kick it up to keep up with that track. And I wonder, the teachers report, we didn't get through as much, we got two, and the slowest kid has to, so that got.
So what I will tell you is that that has not been reported, teachers haven't said, oh, yeah, it's because we de-levelled. I think they feel like I do. We have to unpack that, and we have to say, like, is that part of why the scores were lower than we thought? And I think the answer is probably maybe. We're still unpacking that. Like I said, we're spending most of the day on November 6th, unpacking some of that by subject area. It was definitely the first thing I thought of when I saw those scores. But it's definitely something, you know, we know that for the, that this de-leveling will work. I've worked in many districts that have done this work. It may just be that we might need some more support around differentiation models, and I know the middle school teams have already been working very hard with that this year.
Ms. Brasky? That inspired another question. Thank you. So we've got this sort of advanced track in seventh and eighth grade, and my memory was maybe a year or two ago that there was a different test.
Yep.
And I'm wondering, is that still the process? How is that reflected?
So, no, there is not a different test anymore. Park had a different test.
That's.
For the algebra kids, but kiddos, but now it's a standard seventh grade math test, it's a standard eighth grade math test. Everyone in the state takes the same test.
Got you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Yes, Jeffrey?
I have a question about, kind of, you mentioned not teaching to the test, philosophical methods. What do you think of, like, the exceeding expectations, like, in terms of dragging about how we do versus other districts, it's like, wow, now that's really impressive, if we had a lot more exceeding. But on the other hand, does that mean you've been taking too much time teaching to the test, and that, you know, we're actually, we're very happy to get meeting expectations at?
So when we get to the next part, Jeffrey, it's interesting that you should ask that, because I've obviously thought a lot about this. When we get to the accountability and we look at the points that are allowed, a three is meeting it. Like, the three is the expectation. It's nice to get a four, but the three is really what they expect as a student. So when I first looked at the scores, I was like, oh, 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 you know, I wish we were, you know, if the maximum was 12, I want to get 12, or 11, or whatever. But the reality is, the state is really saying, you should have a nine. So, obviously, being Reading, we want to be higher than the curve, but I agree that I have heard of, and perhaps worked at districts, that did a lot of teaching to the test. Sometimes struggling districts, they literally give MCAS packets, and kids spend weeks and weeks filling out packets and preparing for MCAS. That is not the philosophy we have in Reading. We want solid teaching, we want great teaching that aligns to the frameworks. Like I said, what we need to do is look for pockets where we might not have covered a standard. Maybe we didn't realize that there was going to be as much talk about adverbs on the seventh grade ELA. So if we know that, we can make sure, okay, how many days or weeks are we spending on parts of speech? You know, a lot of the writing prompts have changed. For many, many years, the MCAS had a formulaic, that five-paragraph essay, and kids had that down, they knew how to write it, and then the state said, well, on the second hand, we don't really care about that anymore. And in fact, you know, the way the writing prompts work now, it's a lot more about content than about structure. So, really changed. Like, fourth grade teachers are like, oh, my gosh, now I have to, you know, the timeline approach of telling a story versus, this is how you do it, intro, three details, closing. So it really has changed what the state is acting. What I mean, teaching to the test, what I think we do, just like with anything, if you're going to take a driving test, you have to practice for it, you have to know what the expectations are, you have to know the language, but you have to have enough experience doing the work. The test isn't a big deal, right? So I think, to me, that's a good analogy of being ready for MCAS. We want to use the language of the test, we want to use the style of the test, we want to give them enough experiences so when they get there, they're not like, what is this? I've never seen this before. As a teacher, that's the worst moment in your life. And you can't help them. So you can't do anything to help them. So that, nobody, no teacher in Reading wants that, and we rarely have that. Most of the kids that don't meet expectations, they're kids that struggle, and we are working with them, some of them are continuing to struggle, we're still working with them. But they most likely have seen the questions before, they just might not have answered them correctly that time. Any other questions? Okay. So moving on to the legacy MCAS, this is the old MCAS. By the way, this is going way next year, and we've gotten zero information about what the high school 2.0 will look like, the next generation. Just like two years ago, when the next generation came out, we got zero information before it was released. So in that, grade five science, off the charts, really excited about that. Grade 10 ELA, really high scores, although when we look at accountability, we can talk about that. So they used a different achievement level altogether. This will be going way after this year. They use advanced, proficient needs improvement, and failing or warning. Even just the language seems a lot more prohibitive, meeting standards, a partially-meeting standards to me seems like a better child-friendly. I don't know how many parents actually sit down and go over their MCAS scores with their kids, but I always felt like, when I was a principal and even a teacher with MCAS, to get a warning or a needs improvement, partially-meeting expectations to me sounds a little more palatable to a third grader. But, so this is, and these are the scores, you know, basically 200 to 280, you're probably familiar with this. The only tests that still use the scoring system are the science test, 5, 8, and in this district, 9, and then ELA and math, in 10th. So, sorry, this slide is off the chart a little bit. So here are our scores. Again, we look, we look at the state versus the district. Science in grade five, off the charts compared to the state, which is awesome. Grade eight, although our scores, you know, weren't as high as grade five, way higher than the state. States were at 35, and we're at 52. English Language Arts, and this is where, when we talk about the target areas, it's hard. We were at 96%, which is really high to make improvement at that high level. The state was at 91. Math was lower, math is always lower. If you look, the state average in ELA, 91. The state average in math, at the state level, 78. Quite a differential. In Reading, we had an 88, so we're still 10 points higher than the state, and, but certainly lower than ELA. And then the science, at 81. The ninth grade, we give the biology test, there are other tests. Typically, a lot of districts do the ninth grade biology test. The kids take biology, it's fresh in their minds, they take that test. It also gives them an opportunity to retake tests if they have to. And ninth grade is a nice year to do it, because you're not testing in any other MCAS except for that. So here's some information about our 10th grade, English Language Arts. Because this is not a new test, we were able to show you a four-year comparison. And, again, this is our advanced, went down a little, but our proficient went up a little. So it is an overall improvement of .1. And you can see, we have very, very few kids at the high school that have needs improvement and failing, and just so you know, they do have an opportunity to retake the MCAS. Grade 10 math did go down a bit. That is definitely something at the math department level. We actually, Kate Boynton and I have talked about it, and we met with the department chair to talk a little bit more about it. We are going to definitely be looking this at a math department level of why we decreased, it was a minor decrease in advanced, but a few more needs improvement than we'd like to see. And, again, back to Mr. Boyven's question about cohorts, do we look at cohorts? Sometimes it's as simple as that, that we have a needier cohort taking the test, that's the information that we'll be looking at. Grade nine science, again, down a little bit, 33% got advanced, 48% got meeting or proficient, they don't call it meeting expectations, proficient. And, again, you can see very few kids fail it, so that's really good. The state average in failing is actually very high. Grade eight science, again, a mild dip from advanced, went up a bit, but our proficient went down a bit, so therefore, our needs improvement went up a bit. Oops, sorry. And grade five, which we're super excited about, went up quite, quite a bit. You can see the 23 needs improvement and the seven, that's way down from other years. Any questions before I move on?
Just the science, if you look at, it's the cohort question, right?
Yeah.
We have grade eight science versus grade nine science, so I'm assuming that last year's grade is this year's grade now, plus.
Correct. So might it be low again? It might be, but it's a different test altogether. The eighth grade and the fifth grade test is a compilation of every, every science topic that is covered in the years before. So, for instance, when you, when you fifth grade science test, a topic from second grade could be on that. And likewise, in eighth grade, any topics from K to seven and through eight could be on it, whereas the biology test is really just a biology test.
In grade nine? In grade nine?
In grade nine. They call it the grade 10 test, just so you know, if you see anything with other districts, they always call it the grade 10 science. We call it grade nine because we don't test in grade 10 in science. That's, we just test biology in ninth grade. Some districts give kids options, we just, we don't. Every kid takes biology, it's a better system to just do the ninth grade test. We have really pretty good luck with it.
So I have another question, but just a comment. So that, that grade eight or that now ninth grade class is very strong in ELA.
Yep.
Yet not the science.
So putting my curriculum hat on, that's something, yeah. So those are the kind of things that, again, one day of testing in a life of a child. But, you know, again, that's an area that we go, hmm, that doesn't quite add up. It's not the cohort maybe and it's not this, so what were we teaching? What I can tell you is that our science scores have been higher in other years and we have a veteran, like we don't have a lot of new teachers in the eighth grade science, so.
Because they're, they're strong in math and ELA and not science.
Yeah.
So that just points me right to the.
I mean, honestly Chuck, sometimes it's as simple as like it was a bad weather day. I mean, it sounds silly, but, you know, it just, it's one day. So the reality is we don't have, you know, a staffing issue there, we don't have a cohort issue. So we will look at it, but, John?
No, I was just, it's just to keep in mind, and I think, I hope it's a trend that we're seeing with grade five. The grade five students from last year had three years of no Adam. The grade eight students last year have, did not have three years of.
They have any.
So, and, so, and the high school piece has only been in existence for a year as well. So, and great, and that was in grade nine. So, you know, I think the curriculum changes were made.
That was my point.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you have to remember that in grade eight, they're testing them on concepts from elementary school. So if they weren't solid on phases of the moon in fourth grade, they probably don't know it in eighth grade, right? So it's definitely something we have to look at. All right, so student growth, student growth is part of our federal requirements, the state, Massachusetts was already tracking student growth, but a lot of states haven't been, it's now a requirement. When we look at student growth, and I, perhaps you already know this, but just to be clear, when they look at student growth percentiles, they look for a target of 50%, right in the middle. That's, that's the mean that they want. They want that 50%. When we, you also have to realize that in fifth grade, in order to look at growth, they look at every child who scored similarly to you in third grade, every child who scored similarly to you in fourth grade, and then they look at the growth of those kids and that's how they do it. Every year it builds on years. Okay? So when you look at the high school student growth, you might say 33.3%. Whoa, what happened? There's a combination of factors in there. Traditionally, and I know this to be true, we have students in Reading that have gotten either nearly perfect or perfect MCAS scores every year, every single year. And so their student growth rate is very low. You can get a perfect score in the MCAS and actually really be very low with student growth. I'm not saying that's all the picture and we are certainly looking at growth. We want to, we want to decrease that achievement gap, especially for our kids that aren't at that meeting. You know, that's our benchmark, the meeting expectations. We're certainly not, I don't mean to underscore that at all, but I just want to explain to you that student growth can somewhat be deceiving because kids who don't really change much and their cohort doesn't change much, there's not much growth there. Yes.
Sounds like no good D goes on.
Right. And I, and frankly, I know this as a parent because I did have a student, a child in my house that did very well in the MCAS, had very low student growth, so.
So the question I had is, these are calculated for all students, you're saying, so not just for students that, so it's not like they exclude the students at the very highest level and look at everybody growing toward meeting expectations?
Right.
Is there any alternative metric of this for just students? Again, I'm focused on that partially meets.
So we'll, we'll talk about that. They, they have sort of changed some of the way they look at the numbers, but the student growth is all students. And so when they're doing accountability, they look at achievement in ELA, math and science, if it exists in that, in that grade, and then they look at student growth, those in ELA and math. They don't really do a lot with student growth with science because you only take it certain years. So, you know, if you look at this, our student growths are, most of them are around 50 or higher. Certainly some are much higher. We definitely are concerned when we're way lower than 50. Yeah.
50% of what?
So 50% is their target of growth. So compared to like peers who tested similarly with you in every year you've tested, you are within the 50% ranking of like, right in the middle of every other kid like you.
So it's a percentile.
Yep.
Lot how everybody does.
Yep.
And you look at the cumulative, so I mean, half the students get less than you and that.
Exactly.
More than.
Exactly. And, and you're basically being compared to like students every year along the way and it is cumulative. It's a very complicated, I can't imagine how the statisticians made this formula, but that's how they do it. And they, they pick the target of 50. So that's right in the middle. Anything less, we look at, anything more. But again, a low student growth doesn't necessarily mean low achievement, it could mean high achievement.
Right. So the, just in terms of students, so students who scored similarly to you in previous year, so I'm trying to sort of get to Nick's focus, maybe we're going to get to it on sort of the partially meets.
Yeah.
That those students, depending upon where their score was, you'd be comparing them, their growth to other students who also were partially meets or?
It's the scaled score.
It's a scaled score though.
Not the partially meets, it's the scaled.
It's before they do that. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so here's a average student growth percentile and likewise with the partially meeting or exceeding expectations. So the slide here shows you both. So the reason why this is important is if you look at R M H S, for instance, we're at 88% meeting or exceeding expectations in math, but we're only at 40.2 student growth. So I think that this slide shows that, that in some of the schools, we might not be at 50 yet, so it would end overall in the three years of testing, they weren't yet at 50, but they're 63% meeting and exceeding expectations. One of the other things that to me is important to note here is that all of our elementary schools are within the same kind of range, either right under 50 or right over 50, which again, from a district-wide lens, I'm looking for schools, especially our schools in elementary school, to look very similarly. Typically and traditionally, our middle schools have tested very similarly. This year, we had a little bit of a jump at Coolidge and again, next year, and that means by no means to disrespect the great work that's being done at Coolidge, but I can assure you the great work is also being done at Parker. So I wouldn't be surprised at all if we had the opposite next year. But that, to me, it was really exciting to see that our elementary principals have worked really hard at trying to really balance the schools in what we teach. Any questions on this part of the slideshow? Yes, Jean?
Something I noticed in the previous section with the high school 10th grade ELA and math scores is a four-year shift. Slightly lower advanced while proficient is increasing.
Yep.
So when you're looking at this percent meeting or exceeding, that might stay the same or as you said, even go up, but behind that, there's sort of a shift. And I wonder if that might be connected to what we're seeing when you see 96% ELA achievement, but not maybe the growth we want to see. Do you think those two things are connected?
I think they might be. And I think, to be honest with you, the state used to put a fair amount of apples in that basket of like how many percentage kids you had, you know, if you increased your advanced, then you got extra bonus points for it. If you decreased your lowest scores, you got extra bonus points. The new accountability system doesn't actually do that anymore. I think they're looking at kind of that target, that we want every kid to be at meeting expectations. So let's worry about getting everyone here and then we also want everyone to really set that 50% student growth. So, you know, as, from a district perspective, I'm less concerned about that. You know, it's nice to have advanced scores, but it's, it's less important, you know, the kids have to, I mean, no one really sees the MCAS scores except for the folks in the district. Right, call it, don't ask for them. As long as you pass the MCAS, you graduate, all, life is good. You know, if you get, if you get a perfect score in the MCAS, who knows? Just you, really, your family.
And Abigail Adams.
And Abigail Adams, right. Well, yeah, you can, you can, tuition at a state college, which is now this much of the whole tuition, right?
Thank you.
Yes?
This is something for the evening, I just want to let everyone know the score was across the room.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
What inning?
What is, I didn't hear what you said.
Scoreless.
Scoreless.
Scoreless. Bottom of the second. Thank you.
Yeah. So.
Pitching. That was a question, right?
Yeah. Don't ask me that because my Red Sox experts at home right now. So new school and district accountability, I'm pretty excited. I've had about three weeks to unpack the new accountability system. Even when we got the raw scores, we get the raw scores in the SAR, but it's really hard to translate them. I mean, they are spreadsheets and spreadsheets and you don't know what's going to be, what level. The state was very slow to release things for us at the accountability level of like, what does this raw score actually mean? Because they were creating this new system, so we were all kind of waiting with bated breath of what it would look like. We knew it was going to change because of the new S R regulations, but we didn't know how. We knew that the one to five accountability was out the window, which I was excited about, but we know what was going to replace it. John and I have spent a lot of time talking about it and discussing it, as well as the principals and our data coach. I'm excited about it. I mean, I, I think it gives us some good information and I think it's, it's a little harap your head around, so I think parents might have more questions than what they had. I'm going to try to walk you through it, but feel free to stop me as, as we go. So the accountability system measures your school and then it measures your district performance. One of the other things that was thrown out the window is, as you know, in the past, schools assume the accountability measure of their lowest performing school, that no longer exists. Each school is assessed on its own measure within, you know, the reference that we'll talk about because they have several different categories now of what other schools they're comparing it with. As far as the targets that they gave us, we have not gotten a lot of feedback on how those targets were set. So it'll be interesting to see what our targets look like next year. We were just given a target. Here's your target. We're like, okay, we didn't know that that was our target, but now that we do, we can go from there. The accountability is really supposed to measure two important questions. How is the school doing and what kind of support does the school need? When they made districts assume the accountability of their lowest scoring school, they did that because they wanted you to allocate time, money and resources into that school and say, okay, what's going on? What's nice about Reading is we're doing that anyway. We don't need that kind of category. We are spending time at every school of like, okay, what does this actually mean and how, how can we look at making continuous improvement? So we don't need that. We are really looking at how is the school doing and what kind of support does it need? We're still answering those questions. So some, some new system highlights, it gives you information about school performance. Parents, and they got their results either yesterday or today, they will still see the, their student scores in relation to their school scores, in relation to the district scores. They're going to have information around that. It also gives us Norman Criterion Reference Components, which I'll explain what that means. It also talks about accountability percentages and progress through, towards targets and as I mentioned, we're not sure how the targets were created. This happened when they started the MCAS system years ago. Those original targets weren't really explained and then as we went along, we kind of understood it more. There's more of a focus on the performance of each, of each school's lowest performing students. So that's new and I'm excited about that. What they're basically saying is, we want you to focus on the lowest 25% of your school's test takers and we're going to really ask you to make that achievement gap there. So you're not being compared to other schools, we're not looking, yes, the target still exists, but really your target is, how are we helping that lowest 25% make gains? And that's the achievement gap that the target is supposed to address. So that's exciting to me. Less comparisons between other schools, you're really comparing your own self. So what does that mean? So for instance, if I'm a school district or a school that has very high scores, we're in the 96%, I still have my lowest 25%. They may be also scoring very high, but they're my lowest 25%. They are now going to ask you to bump those scores up to meet the rest of the pack. If you are a school that has less than high scores, obviously your lowest 25, you're going to try. Because in the old system, there wasn't a lot of impetus for improving your overall scores. To lower the achievement gap, you either have to raise the lowest kids or lower your top kids. Now Reading has never done that, we would never endorse that. I won't tell you that that hadn't happened. I would imagine that that is why they changed the system. So you're really comparing against your own weak, you know, kids that haven't tested as high and say really like, where are they going with this? What are they doing? And I'm excited about that because I think that is a more palatable and reasonable process than saying, all right, you have to close the achievement gap with no child left behind. It was like, all right, everyone has to get to 100. What? You know, everyone here has to do, you know, 48 pushups and if you don't get to it, you fail. Like eventually we'll all fail and that's what happened with original MCAS with the no child left behind. So this is a very different system and frankly, we were surprised by it, pleasantly surprised. Uh, yeah?
So what do you, you have a, this is obviously real new, but how do you think that's going to affect resources? I mean, we could have five different, or eight different schools.
So I think, so I think, again, the test only tests what is on the standards, okay? So as long as we're teaching what our great standards ask us to teach, we should be all set. What I can tell you is, this gives schools a lot of autonomy for principals because we work so closely with the principals and, you know, when Gail and John and I and Sharon start sitting down with principals and saying, all right, what do you need? That's going to be part of the question and different schools might need different things depending on their 25%. Absolutely. In Reading, we don't have that much variation compared to some districts. But again, I have to admit, I was always a little annoyed with some of the higher achieving districts. I'm like, well, right, you don't have an achievement gap, so you don't have to worry about closing it. Because most of your kids score here and the little kids who don't are here. Everyone has the lowest 25% and they're going to ask you to bump those up. They're, they're looking at, and that, this is a state decision. I think it makes a much fairer playing field, I just do.
Thank you.
All right, obviously the one to five accountability is gone and it's replaced with accountability category, categories that define the progress that schools are making and the kind of support. So we'll get to that. So as I said, ESA now requires states to include the following indicators. You have to do academic for ELA, math and science, that's now a federal mandate. You have to measure student growth in elementary and middle school. You have to look at graduation rates for high school. You have to look at progress in achieving English proficiency if you have a certain number of English language learners in a school or in a district, that is part of it. In Reading's case, at the school levels, that's not part of it for us. We have a small percentage of ELL learners in this district. And then you have to have one measure of school quality or student success and I'll explain what that means. So this is what Massachusetts decided to do for non-high schools. Now what does that mean? The state now compares schools in several categories. Non-high schools, which is elementary or middle schools up to grade eight, they're in one category, non-high schools. The second category, which we don't have, for schools that have blended, blended, like if they had a K to six, I mean, K to eight or a six to 12 model, some schools have middle schools and high schools and the same thing. And then high schools. So our, the two categories we're going to look at is non-high schools, which is all of, five of our elementary schools, our two middle schools are all in the same kind of way to, they're assessed the same way. And then we just have the one high school. So again, you might say, well, what difference does that make? It does make a difference because again, if you're being compared apples to oranges and different schools have different things, it does definitely, it has impacted accountability in the past. So what they look at are these indicators and just these indicators. So for our non-high schools, so this is for all five of our schools plus our two middle schools, five of our elementary schools. They look at achievement, which that's that overall score we talked about in ELA and math and science, which is the old science test, the CPI, which is their achievement level. They look at student growth in ELA and math only. Then they look for English language proficiency, if they have over a certain number of English language. And then, they look at chronic absenteeism. Now, absenteeism has always been part of accountability in Massachusetts, as far as I can remember, perhaps since they started the MCAS system. John, is that true? And they use the number 95%. So, again, 95% can be kind of deceiving, because we overall have very high attendance rates. But then, you have chronic kids. This is different now. So, now what they look at is students that are absent more than 10% of their days in school. So, you might say, okay, what does that mean? Well, that would be 18 days' school. They come up as ding. Now, you know, we have some, not a lot, in Reading. And we didn't get, we got full points on this, so attendance is not an area of relative weakness overall. But we do have some kids that have high attendance concerns, and that's something that the schools are working really, really hard on. It also means that if you have a student that either moved into the district, or was not here for whatever reason, hospitalization, whatever, 10% of their days. So, if you had a student move in in, say, January, and they were only here 90 days, but they missed more than nine days, they also come up as flagged. So, that is a difference. Yes?
So, they don't have any, like, exceptions to that rule with someone that has a chronic illness or...
So, we code our absences, and all of them are coded with, I think, only one exception, correct, John? The religious observances. Those are coded as, like, absences but non-absences, because of our school committee policy. But every other absence, we don't have the, like, bereavement, that's not a separate category. Hospitalization is in a separate category. The state is pretty strict about how they code these things. And we have to code them according to the regulations. The good news is that we don't have a problem with this.
So, for students at one school for half the year, and they come to a second school, and the second school is a public school, they're counted, the state doesn't account for the fact that they were in school for all those days?
So, they do account for it, but the school, if they miss more than 10% in their new school, so, this is particularly important for transient communities, where kids move to multiple schools, and they may only be in your school for, like, 40 days, but they missed eight of them, that those before are always stressed.
So, it's this percent of the days that are left?
Yep.
Which could be a smaller number than 18, is what you're saying? It could be four.
Correct. If you're in a school for 40 days, 10% is four days. So, if you're absent five, you're now...
And so, I remember the efforts when we had the Joshua Eaton update, we were talking about nine, I think, was the number of students that reached, it was like, under 10?
Under 10.
So, it's half of this, which is nice, because you have a half...
As a district level, we try to look at 10. Courtney runs the numbers periodically. Right now, I think we're looking at five absences at this point in the year, and looking at those numbers, and talking to principals about, what are we doing? Have we contacted, have these understood? Da-da-da-da-da. I think because we do that, attendance isn't really an issue for us. Again, we want kids to be here every day. I don't mean to say that we don't have some kids that are chronically absent. We do. So, then, this is the high school.
Chris, hold on, one more. Just because it was on this slide. English language learners.
Yeah.
What, if you have a very tiny number in a school of English language, like, one or two kids, could this potentially skew?
We're not being, we're not being successful on that.
Oh.
You have to act as a population.
That answers that.
But statewide, this is the media.
Perfect.
So, and then, now, this is...
High school, yeah.
Okay. High school, so this is now Reading and I, what they're looking at. So, some of it's similar. ELA, math, science, achievement, same deal. Student growth, ELA, math, same deal. Now, however, we have high school completion. And this, some of this is not new. The graduation rate is not new. The extended engagement rate, I believe, is new. So, what that means is, the extended engagement rate is kids that are, kids, we, as you know, we educate kids beyond high school. Some kids really need that support. And they look at the five-year report. So, you didn't graduate in the four-year, but you're still there, you're still engaged, you're still, and they want that number to be high. So, out of the four-year kids that didn't graduate, how many of them stayed on for a fifth year and are still engaged? They're still coming? And what does that percentage look like? So, it's the graduation rate plus the percentage of students that are still enrolled. What we don't want is kids not to graduate and then, goodbye, we don't see them. And they're now looking at that. Again, not a huge area of issue for Reading, but statewide, you can understand. They also look at the annual drop-off rate, which is not new. English language proficiency, again, same as the last category. The bottom ones are similar, the chronic absenteeism, it's 10% again. The other new one is this percentage of 11th and 12th graders completing advanced coursework, advanced placement, international, dual enrollment, and other rigorous courses. So, this is brand-new, and we had no idea it was coming. So, what does this mean? This means, basically, most of our 11th and 12th math and science classes, and we do not have international, for those of you who know about that, that is a whole philosophy that some schools use. We do not currently have any dual enrollment. We're looking into, I know Kate Boyden and I just started our conversation about dual enrollment, and what that would mean is that certain courses might come for college credit. Some districts have been able to do that. That certainly requires a lot of energy around that, funding and things like that, but we're generally looking into that. It's basically any of the 11th and 12th grade math courses, any of the 11th and 12th grade science courses, and all the AP courses in English, history, those courses. So, the state is now tracking your set. Yes?
So, are they, is that just percentage enrollment, or like, completion at a certain level? Like, particularly the AP, that's a very measurable rate?
So, they don't, they don't do, like, AP scores or any of that. It's just who's enrolled in it.
Yeah, it's enrollment.
And it has nothing to do with what grade you got in it. It's just who actually is enrolled in it. Like, right now, we just had to submit our October 1 reports, so who is actually in these higher-level courses?
You know what, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, it's on the other side.
What they're looking for?
Um, well, let me get to the next, and then, if you have more questions. So, one of the things that's different is, the accountability percentages can't be really compared, because it's a whole different universe, it's a whole different testing, comparisons are very different. They added additional indicators in all areas, but certainly at the high school level. And there's fewer years of data used in the calculation, so just keep that in mind. In addition, just, I don't know if I have this on one of those slides, but they are now using student growth with mean instead of median. So, what does that mean?
That was in the slide you did on the student growth.
So, just keep that in mind, too, that even the way they look at the student growth, they used to take the outliers, outlier, 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 that's the most score. Now, they do the average. So, it definitely has impacted. So, the schools are no longer categorized as one to five. The number of schools that are placed in a category based upon relative standing will be cut in half. So, in other words, there are not going to be as many statewide schools that they're worried about, the level two-fours and fives. Most schools, well, 90% of the schools will be categorized based on their own performance against targets. Most schools will have 50% of its categorization based on the students that have been in school for two years. So, that was another, a lot of transient school districts with transient populations. They will often, and even in Reading, if we have somebody that we haven't educated for many years, we now hold those scores. A lot of the targets are based on two years of testing. And category labels are primarily tied to the level required of assistance intervention, I'll get to that, and a stronger emphasis on schools commended for success. Do that go? This slide, this slide that I sent home in the memo. So, 85% of the schools in the state are in those top categories, meeting targets and partially meeting targets. The schools of recognition came out after, they kind of let everything else out. And to be honest with you, I was surprised. I kind of thought we might have one. So, we're right on that edge. They still haven't told us exactly what the percentages were. They're still releasing that information. But 85% of the school districts are in that meeting targets, partially meeting targets. And they've really kind of de-emphasized sort of that advanced and failing, and really tried to focus all, like, let's get everyone to partially meeting, like, every single person. And so, when we look at that, our performance targets, we'll report it in two categories. Next year, they'll be three categories, not meeting targets. And then, the lower 15%, of which thankfully, we have no schools in that category, are in focused and targeted support and broad comprehensive support, and we don't have any schools that came anywhere close to that, which is great. So, districts are going to be classified based on the performances in districts as a whole. They basically average all the scores. We're no longer categorized on the lowest performing school, which I've already talked about. District accountability percentages will not be calculated. They're not going, they're classified based on criterion reference components, adjustments made for low graduation rates and low assessment participation. That's another thing that we always have to look at, is how many kids that should be tested are tested. So, that's always something that's really important, that we make sure we test every kid. And you might say, well, of course you test every kid. But there are reasons why we don't. Sometimes kids are hospitalized, sometimes kids leave our district and go to another school, but they weren't, you know, taken off our route, shit, and tied from the window. So, that's something we always look at. And then, obviously, the statewide designated district is underperforming or chronically underperforming. So, these are all kind of new categories. So, the federal requirements are saying, we want to put a lot more weight on achievement, progress, which is that student growth, English language proficiency, which is basically, you learn English within six years, that's what they're looking for, and graduation rates. Together, they're giving them a lot more sort of percentages of the overall accountability. And Massachusetts has done that as well. All indicators have to be included in the weighting. Progress to English language learner proficiency only applies to a sub-success school. So, in our case, not. The ratio between achievement and growth will be held constant between non-high schools and high schools, but actual weights will differ. I'll get to that slide. And then, the State Department intends to apply the same weighting, used to both normative and criterion. Next year, with the new test, we should do all in the same, there won't be some separate accountability measures. And the departments that are next have a three-to-one ratio. So, achievement counts three times, growth counts one. So, this, if you look at this, this is non-high schools. Our current rating is three-to-one, we're in the low ELL category. So, 67.5% of our rating is just on achievement, on scale scores, ELA, math, and science. 22.5% is on student growth, because we don't have English language proficiency, they know they're not doing that 10%. And then, we have chronic absenteeism, it's 10%. So, that's basically how they determine the accountability for each of our seven schools that are non-high schools. In the high school, they, again, have the same three-to-one ratio. 47.5 is an ELA, math and science achievement, but you can see that student growth for us is 22.5. So, keep that in mind with the high school accountability. Growth is measured quite a bit, because we don't have an ELA, ELL percentage. So, they look at, the same thing with non-high schools, 22.5% is student growth. So, if we had ELL, it would be 20, but because of that, it's 22.5. The high school completion is at 20%, and then, we don't have the ELL, but then, we also have that chronic absenteeism, and the percentage of students completing advanced coursework is 10%. That's combined.
So, just a quick question. So, they end up, that 10% is, so, right now, you might report how many are enrolled, but it ends up being based on how many completed with a passing grade on that?
No. How many are enrolled.
Really? So, bothers me.
Yeah.
Do they, can I ask?
Yes.
Can you give an explanation? I mean, why would you combine those?
They want to have more kids in higher-level courses.
I understand that, but why, why are they, you're only getting 10 points for, in the tying of the absenteeism?
Well, because, right, the state, the federal government actually requires that performance be your highest percentage point. So, they know that the actual scale score is like the big umbrella. And then, you have growth, and then, you have graduation rate, and you have other things.
The other category that the federal government says you can choose is defined by law as the smallest, it has to be the smallest percentage.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. This is in Massachusetts.
They have to take out other things to look at. This is what Massachusetts chose. Okay, so, when we talk about the normative component, well, accountabilities were given a percentage point, a percentile of one to 99, calculating using all of those indicators that we talked about. It compares schools administering similar statewide assessments. And it's used to identify the lowest performing, that's the 15% that's really support. And the same calculation was used at the subgroup level. So, although, because I'm doing the 5,000 review, we're not going to get into the subgroups, anything with 20 or more students that tested at a grade level will also have subgroup scores as well. And those are all available on the DESI website. So, you know, just keep that in mind. So, schools are grouped and compared based on the assessments administered in 2018. Non-high schools are, this is what I talked about, are those three to eight grades. They did the next generation math in ELA, as well as the legacy science. The middle category of those hybrid schools that may have high school kids, elementary or middle schools, some districts have K to 12 schools even. And then, high school is, the only grade tested is 10th grade. Now, that, again, the state calls the science test a 10th grade test. In Reading, it's a ninth grade test, but the state determines that they call it a 10th grade science test. And they, last year, only administered legacy tests. So, we only have schools in the top category and the bottom category. So, then, when we look at criterion reference component, they're focusing on closing the achievement gap by raising the achievement floor. So, the gap closing can occur as a result of declining performance. This is what I talked about, is raising your lowest scores, but you could also lower your highest scores. They're not doing that anymore. In addition to meeting targets, the performance of the lowest performing students, which is the 25% lowest testers, every school has its own group of lowest performance, and they're identified from a cohort of students who are enrolled. In the past, we never had access to that. We had access to kids that were in our IEP subgroups, if we had more than 20. But you never knew exactly who were that group that you really wanted to focus on the achievement gap. Because they also categorized, like, for instance, if you're a child on an IEP, if there's more than 20 at that grade level, you're in that whole pile, you could have tested really, really well, and that percentage point is in that. So, it doesn't always give you a great understanding of, like, who are the kids that we really need to focus on that might need support in doing what we need them to do, which is meet expectations. That is, that is the best part. You have something to add? So, we got four points. So, this is when Jeffrey asked that question earlier, Jeff, this is what I was talking about. You, with the criterion reference component, you can get up to four points. Again, to me, like, a four is a right, but no, in the state's determination, three is really what they're expecting. That's definitely met the target. That's really, that's like, anything above that's gravy, but really, the three is the score. Zero means you declined, no change is one, improved is two, met target is three, exceeded target is four. So, even when we start making our own sort of benchmarks, it's like, what would we like to see? We're going to be using the target. We would like every kid to meet targets. So, that's where we're at. So, the highlights are, schools and districts receive an overall classification of not requiring assistance or intervention. We also had no technical assistance in the area of special education. So, when they looked at all our subgroups across the board, we had absolutely no technical assistance needed, which that is an improvement for us. So, we're very excited about that. So, these are really small, so I'm going to kind of talk you through them. I might have to change eyeglasses to do so. So, this one here is, this is right from the DESI website, and this is our overall accountability. And I don't know if you can see it from where you are. But our overall classification is partially meeting targets, at 66% of partially meeting targets. So, zero to 75 is that partially meeting target. So, 66 puts us on the higher end of partially meeting targets as a district, and we're going to talk about that. So, this is also on the DESI website as well, and this is our district. Now, it's hard to read, but if you look in the packets, if you have them, we look at the points here. So, if you look in the all students category, which is, now, this is the whole district. So, they're looking at the high school, they're looking at the non-high schools, all of them. So, for instance, English language achievement, we had up to four points we could have earned, four points meaning that we exceeded expectations, we got four points. four points meaning that we exceeded expectations, we got four points. With math achievement, we received two, which, if you go back, means that we improved, but we didn't quite meet the target. And again, we were given no guidance on what the new targets would be. Okay? So, two sounds bad, but it really means improved. It just means we meet the target that they set. And as we get more used to this new accountability system, we'll start looking at those targets and tracking, oh, okay, well, it was, you know, this target this year, and then next year, when we get to 2019, we'll be like, oh, okay, we go up much, so the target stayed the same. Okay, great. We had no idea what the targets would be this past year, obviously. So then, when you look at next column, which is hard to read, is that lowest performing students of non-high school. So those are that 25% across the district that, you know, but again, in English language learners, even those kids, they made significant gains, they met the targets. We got three points for that. And then math, we exceeded our targets in that, in that group. So, we got four points for that, which is great. So, one of the things that we look at, okay, now, going to the next category, that's all students high school. English language learner achievement, we got four points out of the possible four, which again, is exceeding targets. But with math achievement, we only got a one, which meant that, when you go through, no change. So it doesn't mean that we went down, it just meant that we didn't really change. And we certainly didn't meet our target, and we didn't improve. Some of the things that we're definitely looking at, along with science achievement, the high school scores, we did get some ones and twos. Again, three is what we're going for. We got a lot of threes, our four-year graduation rate, three, extended engagement rate, three, annual dropout rate, three, which means that we met the target, met the target, met the target. And that, by meeting the target, that means an improvement. Chronic absenteeism across the board, we either met the target or improved. We do have a cohort of lowest performers at the element, at the non-high school level that we're going to look at, because we didn't meet the target there. Yes?
So when I look, it's, I'm looking at the big table with
Yeah.
squinting eyes, but it looks like the lowest
Excellent.
Yeah, so the lowest perform, I was comparing the lowest performing students
Yeah.
non-high school versus high school, left, right, left. Strikes me initially is that you have a two for chronic absenteeism on the left side for the non-high school.
Uh huh.
Right, so, would suggest, I don't remember the scale, but exist, it's less than a three.
Right.
It's improving, but not
Right.
not to the standard they've set, or, you know, without us knowing it. And, so that to me seems like a clear idea that, okay, the lower performing students, there's something going on with their measure of attendance, right? To me, that intuitively
Right, they improved, but they didn't meet the targets.
But that, that kind of makes sense to me intuitively. If you go to the high school side, it's, it's almost the opposite. You have an exceeding target of four for the lowest performing students for attendance, but then zeros, which decline for both math and English. And that jumps out at me, like, you're exceeding expectation for having the kids in the building, that's good.
Right.
But then, when they're in the building, they're declining, and maybe that's just a small decline.
It all has to do with the targets that the state set, too. So you have to realize
One is a decline.
But it's a decline, no. Right. Zero is a decline.
A zero is a decline.
One is no change.
So, decline
We did have, we did have a math decline this year, we know that, we had a science decline.
So is any decline a decline rate, so even, no matter how small?
Anything that, if the score is lower than last year, that's a decline.
Even if it's a very modest change?
Yes, if it's point one, we had one decline.
At some point, you run out of
We had one decline.
runway, right?
Yeah.
So I look at
I mean, you know, again, this accountability system isn't perfect. In my opinion, it's fair.
It makes a lot of sense in the mid, it makes a lot of sense in the middle, but it starts to fall a court toward the top, doesn't it?
And I think that's what we have in the whole system, too. So, yeah, I mean, one of the things that we have looked at, because it's new for us and because we got zero points, is our additional indicators for the advanced coursework. We got zero points for that. And that is because we went down with percentage. We went from 64.6 to 60.9. However, and again, that means that 64% of our kids in
Was that 20 kids?
advanced courses, which is huge, right?
In real terms, that's 25 kids?
It's probably less than that. However, the other thing that you have to realize, and I probably wrote it down here, but maybe I didn't, is that our numbers were a lot higher. The year before, this past 2018 graduated class was much, much smaller than the year before. The year before was the highest graduating class.
And it's not percentage-based, it's absolute numbers.
It's not percentage-based, it's absolute numbers, right?
So if you have a bigger class, you'll do better, and if you have a smaller class, it will be represented negatively here.
And what if you're, I'm sorry, but what if you're in a district where there's enrollment change? I mean, there are some districts that are seeing a close of growth in a high school or the other, there's population moving
So then that, they would get those points changes.
Then they get a zero.
I mean, we went from here, I did write it down, we went from 532 students enrolled in 2017 to 460
And as you're looking at the percentage
In the EEP and the higher level classes. And then this year, as it stands right now, we have 584. So that's a marked improvement. So that should be something that we most likely, I would say, would get a three or four.
584 students in advanced play. That means each class, so there, we have kids that take three, four, five, eight, nine.
It doesn't mean 584 out of the 1,200 kids. It means 584 out of possible seats in every class.
I saw that, I remember the presentations where we saw the number, high number of honors and maybe students at the high school.
I mean, it's definitely something we continue to work on. We always want to have higher level courses, but the reality is, we do have a lot of kids taking those courses. The reason why we didn't get points in that is because we went down percentage-wise in one year. Next year, we'll be waiting. So, you know, we had no idea they would even be looking at that. Yes.
So when I'm looking at this, Chris, I'm just trying to compare to where we provided resources, where we need to provide resources.
Yeah.
So, I look at the, the lower ones, you know, I mean, after you go below achievement, I look at a lot of those, they're, I would tie to a lot of the resources we put towards the social, emotional type categories in the budget.
I think there's a direct correlation.
Yeah, and yet, when you look at, I mean, I think we should, you know, I'm not saying we're not doing it. I know one is, is
Change.
no change, but we should be looking at, at math and science
Right.
At the high school.
At the high school as a focus area.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all surprised
And I guess, John, that's, I wouldn't, I meant you, too.
Well, I think we're surprised with the high school scores in general. Again, they're already at a high point. So keep that in mind.
Right.
That once you get into the high 80s and 90s, it's really hard to continue to improve. It's, it's easy to drop down a little bit or a few points. The reality is, you get, you get dinged on that. You have to at least get what you got last year and then some. So to get a three, you have to meet your target, which is higher than what you did last year.
Right, 88% advanced and proficient, right? The math.
I don't know what happened.
Do I just have to look?
No, I don't know what happened.
Right, battery?
We'll keep us there at home, right?
We need to solve something.
Katie Martinez did.
One zero, boss. Right.
Thank you.
Price is pitching, by the way.
Oh.
And it's zero. They had a little tease there at the end of the day, and they said that sale may be healthy enough to pitch, that's why.
So while John's figuring out my computer woes, if you go to the slide where I have all of the schools listed of what their percentage is towards improving targets, so again, it's all about targets, and we have not been given a lot of guidance yet on how they set the targets or what they will look like this following year. So that is something that we'll be attending DESI, we've already attended several webinars. Anything that DESI provides with any of the accountability, myself or my staff have been heavily involved in. So we are definitely trying to get ahead of the curve on this. Barrows, all of our schools luckily doesn't require any targeted assistance or intervention of any kind, which is, makes us in that 85% category. So our progress towards meeting targets, they basically take two columns. They say, okay, your progress towards your targets, and then your accountability percentile. And they're sort of related, but yet not. So the progress towards targets is like, we set those targets, how close were you to getting to them? So, for instance, Killam, for instance, 90% meeting targets. Joshua Eaton, 93% meeting targets. Coolidge, 87 meeting targets. You can see why I thought we might have a couple of schools on that distinction list. Those are really, really high percentages. When I talk to other area districts, most districts are not having 90% meeting targets. That's a very high percentage. The targets were very, very high this year. But then the accountability percentile, that's that last column. Obviously, the schools that had a higher percentage, do you know what happened, John?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm going to plug it in.
Okay.
Battery died.
I'm glad it wasn't something I did. So, I mean, all of our schools did fairly similarly with our accountability percentile. Again, from the district-wide percentage, I'm always looking at our elementary schools, I would like them to be within the same range, right? I would like our two middle schools to be within the same range. Here's the slide where I'm talking about. So when you look at Barrows, 74%, Birchmeadow, 75%. I gotta put my glasses on. Eaton, 81%. Killam, 79%. Wood End, 77%. So they're all kind of within the same category of accountability percentile. And that's compared to all the schools in the state. Coolidge, obviously, had a real bump in scores this year. They really blew some of the targets out of the water. So they're at 91%, and Parker is at 77%. But again, I think, I will be, I wouldn't be surprised if that was reversed next year. It could be, and again, that's no disrespect to the strong work that goes on at Coolidge, it just means that there's also equally strong work going on at Parker. And then, RHS is definitely an area that we're looking at. Our, you know, the, the old accountability system didn't look at all of the meeting targets the same way this new one does. And because our scores were high, we just kind of, the high school was like its own category, and I think you know that, having sat through these presentations before. This year, we were assessed differently, and our scores definitely reflect that. Again, most of our kids do really well on the high school MCAS. It's just that certainly, we didn't meet the targets that the state set out for us, and our accountability percentile is based on those target-meeting measures. So those are without, those zeros and ones, and twos versus threes. Three is definitely the point that we're looking for.
Chris, this is probably going to take me a little bit longer to, you know, get my brain wrapped around this, but
Yep.
Right, so, but the, I mean, the proficient and higher was 90, the state's 91, and we were 96.
Right.
And the state is 78 on math, and we're 88.
We're higher than the state, well higher.
Right, and the same thing with the
Uh huh.
science and T, 10th grade, right, 74, 81. So, I, I know, I don't have my, I'm not fully immersed in the targets, this partially meeting targets metric.
So I'll give an example. The target set for us in ELA for this year was 100. That was the target.
The target
In ELA, for high school. We were at 98.9 in 17, we were at 98.3 this year. So we're at 98.3 CPI, which is not scaled scores. So we are that close
Zero to four.
to 100, but because we didn't meet our target, we didn't get the points.
Everyone would had to have gotten a perfect score to get a four.
Right. And same with math, and I don't mean to undermine the fact that we can't do better, because we know we can't. But the reality is that we didn't, we can't reach 100, we can't. So, with math, the target was 98.6, and we went down a bit, but we still, our overall CPI index for math was 94.6. So that's not a scaled score. What you're talking about with the 88 is scaled score. Our overall CPI index for math is 94.6, which puts us in a very high category. Yes, Mr. Bovin?
So other than the enrollment in higher classes, whatever it's advanced coursework, are all of the other measurements percentage-based or kind of a reflection of an average of scores among all the students in there?
So, sort of. So, so some, all of the new next generations are more so. The old legacies still use the CPI index, which is this compilation, very complicated with the last four, four testings, and they have, you know, they take 100% of this year's score, 75% of last, you know, I mean, I know you've been through it. That's going away, so.
So, is there ever any feedback or opportunity for feedback to the state or to folks over in Malvern at the state education? It seems to me that, well, the example you just gave is a really great one. You have a tenth or a quarter of a point difference in scores, and you go to zero, it would be much more, it just seems to create a huge amount of noise across the state, right? Where you have a lot of zeros that are meaningful. If I were in the state, I am not, but it would be more meaningful to say, was there a dip above a threshold, like, more than a 10% dip or a 5% dip, like, something like that, that'll take the noise out. And the same thing for the advanced coursework. If you have a class that's 350 kids, and the next one's 310, you may actually have increased your participation in courses, and it may look like a decrease. Is there any mechanism for comment?
So this, so, yes, and no. The state will always listen to what we say, but then we get the accountability the week before the tests are released. So, I don't know, I don't have that answer.
When they rolled out the system, there was public hearings on
Yeah.
the system, from, you know, the, the public could comment on it. So there was a public comment. Remember, too, though, the state has to follow certain guidelines.
Right.
We have to, the, the federal government has to approve the accountability system for each state. So, we have, we have certain restrictions with the federal law that we have to follow.
So, the end, the end of the story is that Reading did very well in the MCAS. The new accountability system measures that. We were very happily, you know, I think we were happily renewed in our faith that, yes, this accountability system kind of measures what we already knew to be true, that many of our kids are doing well. And the kids that aren't, that lowest 25%, we're now really given the authority to really focus on that, rather than just a continuous improvement, 100%, we have to get to 100, you know? Now, I will tell you that that target, those targets are always our bugaboo. They always are. Because, like, if you have a target of 100, how do you get there? But this accountability system doesn't solely rest on that. It has other components. And I think, you know, Kate and I have talked quite a bit about the high school scores, and we're going to continue to talk. There are things that we know as a school we can do that might impact our overall rating. Because our high school is strong, our scores are strong, and, and we're going to take a look at unpacking that. Yes?
What is the lowest performing, what's the definition of that?
So it's just achievement.
No, but what percentage is that?
25%.
The bottom 20, that is that same
In that school. Yep. And 20 across the district.
In every school.
In every school in the state.
Across any student demographic, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, yes. So it's not that subgroup stuff that they used to do. I mean, we still get those scores, but
And it's the last year's bottom 25%.
Exactly. Yes.
Can you clarify, because we're talking about subgroups, you know, you don't get the scores if there's fewer than 20 kids. Are we still held accountable, for example, in the past, we've eaten the worst, the poor performance of the specialized subgroups? And sometimes we saw it, because there were 10 different grades, and then some didn't. So even though we don't get, and it's just not requiring technical assistance, would the state let us know if, oh, that student's only seven at school?
Yep.
Even though it's less than 20?
So when you go onto the portal, which anybody has access to, and you go to that detailed report, it actually gives, there's a pull-down menu, and you can look at every single subgroup separately in that same graph. So it looks exactly like this one.
Even if there's fewer than 20?
Only if there's 20 or more.
So what happens if, right, 10 bridges in it, and they all
So then they're in the aggregate. They're just in the whole group. They're just in the whole group.
So our district doesn't know about that?
Oh, no, we, we do it, but we don't get public, yeah. No, no, no. We absolutely look at each cohort. That's why when I said we're digging deeper, we're spending time to look at every single cohort, every single group. What was the surprising? You know, are there kids that we kind of knew that math might be an area of, you know, concern? Were there kids that were shocks to us? Those kind of things. We absolutely are drilling down to that level. Oh, yeah. The state just doesn't report out on those.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
I have a second question. How do you keep track of those kids? So how do you know that there's a problem with all of them, like in that combination?
So the state has given us access to those, those numbers, who those kids are, the twenty-five percent.
Right. I'm saying when they take the test, how they...
It, it has to do with what their score is. So after they take it, then the score determines, their score determines, and each year's score from what I, from what I can gather, each year's score will develop a new list.
Of the lowest twenty-five percent that you, that...
Yep. It may not be the same. You could be on a list one year and then not on the list another year.
So it's, you're always focusing on the lowest twenty-five percent that, that test code, that whole...
What else, what else it does away with is that old CPI system held you hostage for four years. If you had a cohort year, you know this to be true, because we had it in Reading. You owned it a hundred percent, then seventy-five, then fifty, then twenty. This, every year is kind of a new system. You take that twenty-five percent and you look at that number. But it could be different kids.
But you have access to who, you do, the district does.
We do.
Access to who those students are, so that you can identify...
Yes.
Groupings, individuals, you know, kids who...
So as we set up intervention groups, that's part of our conversation. Again, MCAS is one snapshot. And there are kids that absolutely don't test well, but then in class are meeting standards day-to-day. So, but we definitely are looking at that. Yep.
So, I just want to make some global comments about this, and I'm still, there's a lot.
There is a lot.
It's really different. But I think I tend to share your optimism about this as an improvement over the old accountability system for a lot of the reasons you articulated. So I'm cautiously optimistic. I'm eager to learn more and see on the next few years' look, but I think there is real improvement in this. And I agree, I'm glad that you're, you know, looking at the high school. I think that merits a close look. And the Parker-Coolidge divide, I hear what you're saying, but I also agree, yeah, a second year where there's a similar divide probably does merit a real conversation.
But I couldn't agree with you more. I, I just think, given historical information of the scores in, in the different accountability system, they were never that different.
Right.
So, and again, we didn't know what the targets were. So we, we need to see, if we have another year, we're, now, now, yeah.
So that, I had a very similar reaction before your presentation, so I had a very similar thought. The only other thing I wanted to add is I think the elementary scores are really, really excellent, and I'm sure I'm not going to be the only one to say it, but particularly at Eaton, I mean, a lot of people have been doing a lot of really good work for a lot of years to see this kind of improvement. And I, you know, we were the first group to hold accountability and require annual updates to the school committee, but I think we should be the first to honor some real, real significant achievement.
Yeah. When our scores opened up, when we got the window, because we got the raw scores, but you didn't know, you know, it looked, we were cautiously optimistic that we had made gains, but you, you don't really know until they release that. And I immediately called Lisa Marie to tell her, and, you know, I just, my hat goes off to all of the elementary principals. They're really mindful of this. But we did have a school that was, you know, working really, really hard to try to get out of that level-three status. And I think this is a real testimony to the hard work that's gone on in that school, because those are really solid scores. They're not just solid for Reading, they're solid for everywhere.
Absolutely. That's what's striking about them, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Docser.
So maybe I should understand this better.
Okay. We're still learning, Linda.
So when you talk about not knowing what the targets were going to be, and that now, what would you do differently? So you'll be thinking about what you would do differently. I'm hearing that, and then I'm hearing that we don't teach the test. So I'm trying to figure out how, how those two reconcile.
So I'll give you an example.
Thank you.
So in the past, when we had our targets, originally with No Child Left Behind, the target was a hundred, right? And they took every year's test and divided by how many more cycles, and you had to go up four points or whatever to get to a hundred. So everyone reached the cliff at some point, right? Then they changed it, and they said, oh, we made it a little bit more accessible, and now it's only to like ninety, more or less. So as a school, as a principal for many years, I was able to say, oh, okay. So knowing that I have to get to approximately ninety, where are we now, right? And how am I going to make those gains each year? So there are things that we looked at in those days, more so. A lot of them were, were simple things, like if we could get two more kids into the advanced category and get those bonus points, then we could make that, that, okay? This does, this system doesn't include that. This is all about meeting targets, which again, we still, still don't know where those targets are. There, there's going to be more information about how they set the targets, and I think after this next cycle, we'll have a better idea. And yeah, the targets, do principals pay attention to the targets? Absolutely. However, do we say to teachers, you must reach that target, do whatever you can, drill, 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 practice, practice, practice? No, we don't. We say, let's have some strong teaching, let's teach to the standards, which is the requirement, and let's look for kids that may need more intervention to get to that level. You know, that, that middle of the bullseye, I always say, our work here is like the bullseye. The bullseye is the have-to-know. That's the standards. That's really what the MCAS tests. The, the, you know, that exceeding expectations category, that's that outer rim of the bullseye. And, and frankly, that's great if we achieve that, and we have many, many kids who do. But really, our number-one priority is that middle, and that's what MCAS really seeks to look at. And I'm excited that they got rid of a lot of that stuff. Like, we don't care how many advanced kids you have. We, we want to focus on getting everyone to meeting expectations. And I think for Reading, that's a very reasonable goal. And one that we'll probably spend my, the rest of my career working on, so.
I'm hearing you, and I really appreciate that that support will be there and that focus is on the standards.
Yep.
Since it's obvious that those that are already scoring really well, the detriment is that if they just like make a wrong choice on a, on a question and they get that wrong, they can easily slip.
They can.
But what, if any, impact is this going to have on the focus of those who do well and can be gauged to take on more challenges and do better?
So again, at the high school level, I mean, I think MCAS is just a data, right? They know they needed to graduate. Many kids in our school do really well in the MCAS, and it's just another test for them, right? Most of the tests that they have in their regular classes are harder than the MCAS. So I, I don't think it's going to impact them a lot. I mean, we're not going to spend a whole lot of time trying to make sure advanced kids get advanced or whatever. We're just going to keep doing great teaching and work on better ways to, to make that happen. And, and those scores will just, I mean, are we going to get to a hundred? No. Like I said, none, if we said a hundred percent of us are going to do forty-eight push-ups, we couldn't all do it, even if we practiced every day. There's no way to get to a hundred. But at the high school level, we're, we're pretty close in a lot of areas.
So let's, we still have two items and an executive session.
Okay. Any other questions?
I jumped ahead to your very last item.
If you have any other questions after this, you know, feel free to reach out to me individually.
Thank you.
John, I don't know why this doesn't seem to be, keep on clicking.
Maybe there's batteries. We don't need it for the other two items anymore.
No, you don't.
So I'm going to make the next motion, and that is, it's related to the MASC, MAS conference, which is coming up in November, six, seven, eight. Right now, we have Dr. Docser and Mrs. Barowski both attending, and perhaps Dr. Daniel Macar. So what we'd like to do is appoint a delegate, there's a delegate assembly there. I personally have attended this delegate assembly a couple of times when my previous tenure, from 2003 to 2010, and had also represented the committee as a delegate, I mean, the committee as a delegate to the assembly. There's a lot of discussion that happens at the assembly. I consulted Dr. Doherty to serve our MAS through rep. And, you know, the recommendation is that we basically make the vote to appoint Dr. Docser as our delegate. And Mrs. Barowski as the alternate, so I...
Second.
Great. Second, right. Chuck, so right now, we're, they basically will act on our behalf and represent basically the, the leaning and the, the, sort of the will of the committee, and we're not going to know how to do that. We're not really going to talk specifically about resolutions tonight. It's pretty late. But I assume when Mrs. Barowski and Dr. Docser come back from the conference, we'll coordinate with them on what kind of report they'll do back to the committee. And I'm sure that will give some information on the resolutions. So if there's no further discussion, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Yes.
That's five-zero. And the other, very quick thing, you guys had something at your table, and basically this came through Ann Landry, who sort of took, took this upon herself in collaboration with RED. And basically, on Sunday at noon time, the Reading community is going to gather on the town, common in solidarity with the Jewish community to stand in opposition to antisemitism. And really, in talking to Ann, the whole idea is to just for the community to gather in opposition to hate and to show our strong support. The, Ms. Landry brought this, Ann Landry brought this to the Select Board on Tuesday night. It was something that was happening very quickly. So it is happening this Sunday, which I recognize is really difficult for people to sort of find out on a Wednesday, that, you know, there's this rally on Sunday. And I encourage committee members to attend, but fully understand that that might not be possible, given, you know, plans this week. And Dr. Doherty, I, Dr. Doherty needs to be there. And he knows, we know that, we understand that. It's important, and so he certainly has agreed. He will be there, he has changed his plans, and will certainly represent the district. So I want, you make the motion?
Can I ask him?
Put the motion, and then, yeah, yep.